Hello.
Hi, Lad.
Good evening, Mr. Watson.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Good. Did you get your studying done?
Yeah. There's a lot of it this week.
Yeah.
Did you figure out your screen, Lad?
Yes and no. What I wanted to do, I'm not going to be able to do because, but it's not a big deal. I have a backup.
Okay.
Thanks.
Brad, did the mayor or Tamara get ahold of you?
You talked to me?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. No, I didn't talk to either one of them today about your question.
The mayor is running just a couple minutes late, so Tamara might have you start the meeting as mayor pro tem.
No problem. Thanks. Thanks for letting me know.
Just a little heads up.
Maybe, maybe I'll call in a second. Lad can lead it then.
Maybe I might accidentally lose my screen again. How are you doing, Greg?
I think he's frozen now.
Yeah.
Got booted out of the room somehow.
It's weird. It's like you're still there. Oh, there it goes. There were two of you for a minute there. It is 6 o'clock. Greg, would you like to begin?
Well, hello, everyone. I'm interim city administrator Greg Elliott, and I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests roll call. This is a pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting, and participants will be invited at that time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meeting free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut the meeting down if this happens. Thank you all for stating. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for the roll call.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
As we begin our pre-meeting, I will turn it over to you, Greg, to begin.
The first item tonight is an update on our air pollution ordinance, and our city attorney is going to provide that.
Good evening. We had this scheduled for the last pre-meeting to discuss, and we ran out of time. So I have sent out a copy of a draft of air pollution ordinance to the commission, and it's also available online on our website. There's a link for anyone who wants to go there and look at it as we talk through. This would be an amendment to section 54 of our current city code on nuisances, and it would add air pollution nuisances. This would have an effect on several of our local industries, including the cannabis industry, but also industries who produce pet food or supplements and industries dealing with sewage treatment, those in dairy processing, grease removal services, and any other activity or industry that comes up in the future that we may feel causes an air nuisance or an odor nuisance. Basically, what would be required is that those industries that fall into one or more of those activities would be required to have an odor control plan submitted to the city. That odor control plan would be submitted annually, and basically what it is, is it's a guideline for what that particular commercial business plans to do to mitigate the odor that comes from their business. We recognize that industry comes with odor. It's not something that's going to be able to be eliminated, but we do want those who have those type of challenges to be responsible corporate citizens within the municipality. So by developing an odor control plan, we're hoping that this gives them guidelines that they have to stick with. An odor control plan is generally developed between the business owner and some type of environmental engineer that has specific knowledge in that type of industry and how to control any type of odors that may be coming from the facility. So those who are already up and operating, which would be many of our current businesses, they would have to have the odor control plan, but would be somewhat grandfathered in, and that they wouldn't have to have certification from an engineer. They could have engineer develop it, but they wouldn't have to go the extra length of having certification because that may require some costly changes to whatever they're already doing within their business. However, anyone coming in after this goes into effect would be required to have a certification from an environmental engineer. And then, in the event that a complaint is made to the city with regard to odor coming from any of these affected facilities, then we would have a process that we follow that would include when we receive a complaint, if we receive more than five complaints from individuals representing separate households within the city within a 12-hour period that relate to the same type of odor description, then we would have to go out and verify the source of the odor. Those complaints would have to be made in a specific way, meaning that there would be a name, address, and phone number of the complainant, a time and date of the call, and a description of the odor nuisance. And we would keep records of those things. Then at that point, our department would use reasonable efforts to investigate, and if they find that there is an odor, they would go and we would meet with the company and talk about their odor control plan. Is everything that's in that plan operating correctly right now? Has any type, any of their equipment broken down temporarily that might cause the odor to be increased for a short period of time? If any of those things are happening, then they would be given about, they would be given eight hours to correct that, get it fixed, or else they could be given a violation for this. So it would also require that they let us in for inspections. That would be one of the requirements of the ordinance, and that we don't have to get a warrant in order to come in to see what's going on and be able to address these type of issues. So if we find that things go on repeatedly or continuously, then we can ask them to update that order control and revise it because it has to be submitted to us annually. So if we see that there's an ongoing issue with a particular commercial business, then we can require that they make some changes and adjustments to that so that they can do a better job of trying to mitigate whatever odors are coming from their facility. But basically, there would be civil infractions that can be issued for it if they continue to have violations, that the idea is to put a program in place that requires them to do everything within their power to mitigate any type of industrial odor so that it makes for a better living environment for those in the community that are living nearby. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry. All right. You go ahead, Desiree.
In my first read of this, this seems to be far-reaching. And if I'm not mistaken, we had a number of drafts on the marijuana ordinance. Wasn't this addressed specifically in that ordinance? And if so, why are we, why are we expanding the net on this? And then, I mean, to even go further, you know, take, for example, a fast food restaurant or something like that that purposely emits what some people would call pleasant odors and other people would call terrible odors. I mean, why, I just feel like this is too far in, is it, is it necessary?
Okay, so to answer that, it was not directly, or I would say not thoroughly enough, addressed within the marijuana ordinance. And the reason that the net is cast broader than that is because we have requirements under the constitution that we treat businesses equally. And so if there are other businesses that we get odor complaints about, we cannot single out one business and say, you're the only one that's not allowed to emit an odor. And so because we know that over the years, we've had many complaints from these other types of industries that we've listed here, we've looked at it and said, in order to be fair and not single out one industry, that's the reason we've cast them as wide as we have, and then left that caveat that if another industry were to come into the area that falls into that category, that it could also be added. I do agree that we had many drafts of the other ordinances, and this definitely can be tweaked. This is a first draft, bringing it to you guys. We planned on having many meetings with our odor advisory panel that we put together, but COVID came right after our first meeting, and so we wanted to get this out and try to at least start making some progress on it because we have so many businesses that would be affected by it.
I mean, I agree that there's progress made. I still, I'm not, I mean, I'm not overly comfortable with it the way that it's written just because of it being so general. You know, I mean, it goes, it goes with every industry. I mean, heck, if somebody pulls up in, in, over in the industrial park, you can smell potpourri of things, and especially you could when Mar-a-Lata was running and there were varnishing cabinets. I mean, it depends on the day, the wind, the humidity, everything. And so I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agree with this in the way it's written right now.
Okay, and I, we can definitely go back and look at that. I felt like item C, yes, item C applicability specified that it should be unlawful for any person engaging in one or more of the following activities to emit air contaminants. And then we listed those out so that those type of businesses would be kind of on notice that it applies to them. We anticipate them having these type of odors. So that being said, it would, because places like fast food restaurants and things like that aren't listed there, it wouldn't be applicable to just every and any business. It would be applicable when we see that there's a consistent pattern of an odor.
But to that point, I mean, somebody living next to Burger King, five people living near Burger King could call into the city, and then all of a sudden, we have to have an odor mitigation plan for Burger King? Doesn't make sense to me.
But we wouldn't because it would, they, this wouldn't be applicable to them according to section C.
But you just told me that it just takes five calls, and then all of a sudden, they're under consideration for enforcement.
It takes five calls if this ordinance is applicable to you.
But then you just told me that it's not constitutional to apply it to all businesses, or they can choose.
Correct. It would have to be places that have an issue with it.
Okay, so, so if five people call in and have an issue with Burger King smelling like cheeseburgers, then, then we've got an issue, don't we?
Yes, I suppose you could see it that way.
And then, and then from that point, it's all restaurants. And then from that point, I just, I struggle with this in that, in that capacity. But I'll leave, I'll leave the floor open for the rest of my peers.
Thank you.
I'll kind of piggyback on that. So do we have any data to see how many complaints we have in regards to odor outside of the marijuana industry? Because that's already kind of been put in that ordinance. So, so like, if you drive by my store right now, I mean, they're cranking cake donuts right now, and it smells. You can get out of your, you can smell it. So what if somebody, one of the folks who live back in front of the building, if they have a problem with the way donuts smell? Or like, like Commissioner Watson said, so, or somebody that's mad at me or something, right? So then they get their, you know, their friends in the neighborhood, and they call. So I'm not big on regulation unless it has to do with safety. And I think odor is more of a, more of a annoyance, more than a safety issue. So I'm not through with this either. But again, I, I'm open to suggestions, but I just don't want to get to the fact where it's a, you open up a big can of worms that we can't go back from once we, I mean, we could always amend it and then do some changes. But my concern is that, is that, you know, I'm not a big regulation guy unless it has to do with safety. And I think this is more of an annoyance than a safety issue, in my opinion. And I need to know also if we have, how many complaints we've had about odor outside of the marijuana industry? Because I'd be curious to know that statistic, so.
Okay, and I don't know that we, I'm sure that we could go back and look and see if there's any data in code enforcement. I think that the complaints come to several different departments within the city. Sometimes they come to me. Sometimes they go to the city administrators. Sometimes they go to code enforcement. So it just depends on what that complaint is. I can tell you that there is a history of having complaints with regard to grease removal services and the dairy production. So those are the only other two that I'm aware that have been ongoing history of having complaints about the odor. I see the mayor shaking her head, and I think she had reached out to me recently about complaints about the dairy, so I'll let her speak on that. But those, me being aware of those is what caused me to add them into that group and knowing that some other industries that are planning to come into the area soon have had those issues in their current locations as well. Mayor?
Well, one of the questions that I had is, I know, you know, that we've had a lot of complaints about the marijuana industry. I know we've had, you know, complaints about, you know, grease. I know we've had some complaints about dairy. Honestly, at least the ones that I've seen that have come my way other than the dairy, they're not city residents. It's coming from the townships. Like, that's where we're getting even the grease complaints. Like, those are coming from the township. So like, you know, it's not coming So, like, you know, it's not coming from city residents. So, I, I, I guess my question is, I know that you were researching, like, what they are doing in other areas. And, you know, I know that my daughter lives in Nebraska. She lives right by a pet food distributor. It is extremely smelly. I, I do know that. I don't know, but I don't know if you've researched places like that where they have those kind of odors. I don't even know what's in place there, you know? And I, I, I could look into that. I don't know myself what's in place out where she's at, at school. But I do know when they complain, it does seem to go away because they have made complaints out there. I'm not really sure, but I know that you were looking into things they were doing, like, out in Colorado, and you were talking to various entities. So, I just wondered, what, you know, like, is this what they have? Was this where you came up with it? Or had, you know, like, I, I just kind of want to know the reasoning behind it. I'm, I'm a little curious about that.
Okay. So, yes, I have talked to some people out in Colorado and also in California. In Colorado, though, what I did find is this is the type of procedure that they're using out there. They do have a lot stricter policy in place, and they have even developed a environmental health department within their city. They have a city health department, and then they've developed an environmental health department where they have people there that, that's all they do is enforce these air pollution ordinances and to make sure that each business that is affected by it has their odor control plan and that it is certified and approved by engineers. And then, they go out whenever the complaints come in and investigate these things and work with the different companies to revise the odor control plans and help them to be in compliance. So, that is where the idea came from. And as I did additional research, it started off with us doing research on a nose-o-meter or smell-o-meter that we all heard about a couple of years ago. And it's literally a piece of equipment that inspectors would put in front of their nose. And then, it would, as they inhaled, it would read how strong the odor was. And so, we reached out to the West Coast states because we saw they were using them to regulate odors and especially had tried them for regulating odors from the cannabis industry. And what we found is that they told us that those were only useful for certain types of odors but could not be used in regulating the cannabis industry because they actually use a carbon filtration system, which is what the cannabis industry already uses to dissipate their odor. So, therefore, by the time it would go through that mechanism, it would be dissipated even more, and you would not get an accurate reading. So, they shied away from using that type of equipment and went to using odor control plans and working with the companies to be good corporate citizens and getting the cooperation from the companies.
I guess the thing that scares me about this is that, just what's already been brought up by Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Halt is the targeting. I mean, we've already seen it. I, I've seen us running around, you know, I've seen city staff having to run out to a business to check because they've had so many complaints from city residents or neighboring residents that, that are tar, they're already saying, "Well, it's, it's the smell's coming from here, and you get out there, and that place isn't even in operation yet, so you know the smell is not coming from there." And maybe it's their neighbor is growing or whatever it might be. And so, they're just targeting, and I, I feel like it's going to be wasting our money because, you know, that's my fear. I, I'm a fear, I'm fearful when it comes to city resident complaining because I, I'm worried that they're just going to assume it's this company over here when it literally could be their neighbor, or it could be something else they're smelling, or it could be coming from somewhere else. Are we going to be running around, chasing around these complaints? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's my only fear, but I don't know how else you could go about it. But I'm just, I'm just expressing why I'm concerned about it. I don't want to waste our money running around just because everybody thinks it's Company A when it might not be Company A at all.
Yeah. I definitely can.
Solution, but I just had that.
Well, I definitely, I mean, I'll defer to the direction of the commission. This is something that we looked at a while back, and I was asked to put something together. But if we're feeling differently about it at this point, we definitely can, you know, set it to the side. Or if you would like me to, you know, go back at it and, and try doing something different or reining it in more specifically, we can try that as well.
I just think that my position is, unless I have facts and data to back up putting an ordinance on for regulation red tape, I just can't support it. I need to have defined data and factual information of how many complaints we're getting, who, who are they going to, and what industry? I mean, I need to have some information before I even think about slapping more red tape on businesses.
Okay.
Tamara, let me add that unless an odor is a health concern, I don't know if we need to really worry about it. I, I grew up on Dennis Street, and there were times of the year when the old tomato canning factory was really pumping it out. And, you know, we dealt with it. We all got through it. A few people liked it. But there were some people, it didn't, it didn't bother them at all. They thought the smell was good. I wasn't one of them.
Me either.
Yeah. You know, so I, I guess unless it's a health hazard, I guess I would rather not worry about it.
If I may, I have a question for Mr. Elliott. When the planning commission approves the site plan, specifically in this case for a marijuana grower, if I remember correctly, there's conditions on that site plan approval that call for odor mitigation. And if I, if I'm correct, I guess my question would be, in that case, do we have any recourse with a company that is, we're getting a lot of complaints about the odor coming out of their, the facility?
Oh, the conditions are associated with the zoning exception permit. Though those facilities are all zoning exception uses, so they require special approval, and that approval can be conditioned. What we've been doing more recently is to require them to provide us their mitigation plan. We haven't gotten into reviewing it. I'm not sure we're qualified to review it really at that level. You know, I think if we were going to, could go that next step, we probably would need a consultant to assist us in reviewing those plans. That would be what we're going to do. But what we've done to do something is to have them on record as to what their plan is. And at least, we put that in the file and have that as a, as a minimum standard, I guess, if you will, for their operation. Certainly, you could, you know, the regulations and the zoning ordinance could be expanded to provide more particularly for the types of odor mitigation measures that would be required. But right now, there's nothing, there's nothing contained in the specific regulations related to marijuana facilities that requires it. You know, pursuant to the planning commission's discretion, we've inquired into that as, as part of our discretionary review and zoning exception permits.
Thank you.
Tamara, I have another question. I, I do believe I saw, maybe that was just they were thinking about it, I'm not sure. But doesn't at least one of our neighboring townships have a odor ordinance already? Also, I mean, is this similar, or am I mistaken that they haven't done that yet? I was thinking I saw something.
I'm not aware of one in a nearby township. All of the ones that I reviewed were pretty far away from our municipality. So, there are some in Michigan, but I've not come across any in neighboring municipalities yet. I do know that, interestingly, I would agree with you that most of the complaints that we get do come from residents outside of the city limits. They are in the surrounding townships. We have worked with those townships to the best of our ability, worked with the township supervisors and so on. And you're absolutely right that we have gone out to check to see if there were illegal grows going on and things like that. And when we get there, there's no grow whatsoever and no odor on the property at the time. It's really interesting because a lot of the complaints, they say, you know, "I'm out walking, and I'm walking my dog, and I smell marijuana, and I know that my neighbor grows marijuana, but it, it's got to be that business." And in all actuality, if you're not within a certain proximity of the business, you're probably not smelling anything from the business. It probably is your neighbor who's growing. So, a lot of it falls back to education for the community and them understanding that your neighbor can smoke on their front porch or in their garage, and you're going to smell it in your yard because they're doing that. Sometimes you're driving down the street, and you stop at a stop sign, and I can smell it coming through the vent of my car because there's a car that goes past me where they're smoking. And though it's not legal for them to be smoking while they're driving, they're doing it, and you can smell it emanate from the car. So, there's a lot of other reasons why the odors are there. And so, I can't say for sure that it's always our businesses either.
Tamara, we did discuss this over the last year or two. And so, you're, you're not out of sync with us in that we have talked about an odor ordinance in the past. So, I, I do want you to, to know that, that I remember those conversations, and maybe not everyone was in on those conversations. So, I appreciate that you're remembering it and bringing it to our attention. But as Commissioner Halt said, maybe we just need to step back and figure out how much of a problem this really is before we put an ordinance out there about it.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that's most of you who feel that way, if not all. So, that's exactly what we'll do. And we'll see if we can gather some data that already exists. And if, if there isn't much of that, then I think that Greg and I can't, at least about saying, whenever a complaint for this does come in, forward it to us so that we can start to gather data moving forward. And then, we can touch base with you in a few months and see what we've been able to gather on that.
Okay. Thank you, Tamara. So, our next topic is urban chickens. We have some slides to share if we could bring those up. I'm not sure. Bob, are you presenting on this tonight?
I was, Bob, if you want to. Otherwise, I was just going to take it as our discussion since Bob's already, Bob and Chris Williams have already talked about their piece. But Bob, do you want to present this, or?
I guess I would just do a super quick overview of this. I don't feel a need to present since the commissions had a chance to review this. But based on the last discussion that we had, we had an opportunity to reach out to other municipalities and gather some data associated with urban chickens. We've been working with MSU Extension, gathering some educational supports and opportunities for adult learning and for 4A opportunities for students. Outreach with the Dominican Sisters in terms of supporting sustainability, and then looking at the successes of other municipalities that allow chickens. And really seeing that, you know, when it comes to complaints, Adrian Leeds with a number of complaints and with violations as well. And we don't allow chickens. So, that, you know, chickens are here, people are hiding them in the backyard. That's a concern for animal abuse. And we want to make sure that there's a, there's a good group of people here who want to follow the rules, want to do this in an appropriate way and support, support sustainability within their own yard and with their family. And there's been some polls out there that you see WLEN recently conducted. One, the results are up there. So, happy just to have a discussion there. And we also do have a representative here from the MSU Extension that would be willing, Matt Chain would be willing to answer any questions that the commission may have from the MSU Extension and adult learning as well.
Okay, thanks, Bob, for teeing it up. And I do want to publicly express my appreciation to Bob for, for preparing these slides and doing a lot of legwork on these. Fellow commissioners and mayor, I just wanted to bring this back up. It is definitely something that some of our residents are passionate about. And so, my goal tonight in our study session is simply to gather some more additional feedback from you as to what might be an acceptable resolution for us to bring forth at our, at our next meeting in a couple of weeks. You know, Michelle, if you want to flip to the chart with the data of municipalities across Michigan that allow chickens, that'd be too, yep. Again, and Bob brought it up, is that, you know, us as a community, we already have three complaints and one violation within our city. So, you know, it, it's my, my opinion that, that maybe this is something that there is some demand for. I don't expect it to be high demand in any way, shape, or form, or with many permits issued. But there is already some urban chickens going on. Looking through this, there seems, the data seems to support the idea that this is not a public nuisance, as, as many of us, including myself, originally thought it was. You know, Commissioner Strayer and I did make a visit to, to, to a location where they had a setup with, I forget, I think, four hens. And, and as you might remember, I, I did not notice any kind of nuisance related to those hens from odor, from sound, in, in any way that we, we worried about or, or thought were, were a negative. So, you know, not much activity there. I also did some research on, on the own ordinances, actually looking at ordinances and resolutions to the communities, and I'll share some of my findings with that in just a second. I'm not going to drag this out all too long. But, but I just wanted to, to make sure that those points were, were seen and, and heard. Considerations for the change to zoning, which is what we would have to do inside the city. You know, Bob laid out some considerations for zoning. I, I, I want to kind of expand on it a little bit, or at least put my own little spin on this as to what I think the, the right answer is. I think the forehand maximum is, is where we should absolutely start. There's no, there's no need to stretch this or, or make it too complicated. I, I think a forehand maximum would, would meet most families, if not all families, needs for, for chickens in the backyard. Toledo has a nice clause or part of their application where they map out their yard and show where the coop is going to be. I like that idea a lot to be included in our ordinance. You know, one thing, enforcement, I don't want it to be an issue. Similar to having dogs, I think it's, it's, when one of the things of dogs is you've got to have the license on the collar. Similar, or along that, that vein, I would like to have it, you know, somewhat of like the license plate or some kind of license that you have to show on your coop. Because part of having, being a responsible chicken owner is you have to have the coop. So, I want that to be very obvious where, if, if we see a coop and there's no license on it, that's an issue. It doesn't have to be research, you don't have to go hunting for it. You don't have to contact the, the homeowner to be like, "Hey, can you find this in your file?" No, it's just there, and it has to happen. Again, similar to dogs, I'd like it to be considered a one-year license that, that has to be renewed on the annual basis, just to touch base, as well as for any updates to the file, to contact information, and things like that, along with the, the chickens. I'm not a big fan of allowing these on landlord property. I would rather just exclusively make it on owned property just because of the possible, "Hey, I'm going to leave this $200 coop that's, that's tall in, in a nuisance." I don't want that to become a landlord's problem and also possibly part of our bike problem. So, I, I would like to eliminate that bullet point from, from consideration. So, there, there would be an application fee associated with it for administrative and our enforcement is where I would like to go with it. And I, and I think, you know, MSU Extension is represented on this call right now. I think that's a pretty, very important resource, one for us as a city, but also for, for our fellow residents that, that might be interested in going down this road. And I don't know how we pull that relationship closer or tighter to the city for us as we, as we consider a resolution to allow this. But, but I think there's a lot of wisdom and a, and a lot of, a lot to be learned from them that we don't have to figure ourselves. I'm sure there's success and failures along the way of, of other municipalities that have done this. But as, as I said, I, my mind has been changed as I've done more research, as well as I've been presented information from Bob, that, that this is not a nuisance matter for the city residents. So, I guess at that point, I open it up to the floor. I, I would like to progress in the next two weeks with, with preparing a resolution. I would like any feedback that you might have on this matter, in addition to what I just said.
In terms, in terms of next steps, the prohibition is in the zoning ordinance. And so, similar to what we did last time in initiating the rezoning of the Marvin Farm that we're going to talk about later, you, as the city commission, could initiate a text amendment. You could work up the language and then refer that to the planning commission. But You as the city commission could initiate a text amendment, you could work up the language and then refer that to the planning commission, but. From a formal standpoint, it starts with a. Public hearing before the planning commission. That's that's where the ordinance change, the text change will start.
Sure, and I'm committed to doing that prior to the in the in the appropriate timeframe.
So Commissioner Watson, right now it's against the the zoning is against essentially farm animals. So what's to prevent someone coming to us in a year from now and saying, well, you allow chickens? Now, what about ducks or goats or rabbits or whatever else? Is this opening us up to having to allow or even being, you know, not required, but. Are we going to open ourselves up to having further discussions about what's a but what's a backyard animal and what's a farm animal?
Sure, and I think that's a very valid point, Commissioner Robertson, and and as with other things, just like we're making a change. I mean, it's worthy of evaluation, I think, in, you know, if somebody wants a goat, I guess what? What's the case for a goat in your backyard inside the city? I don't know, but I, you know, I mean, that might be an extreme example, maybe a duck is a good example. But but I don't know what accommodations need to be made for for that sort of farm animal or what would be known as a farm animal. But I think it's very valid that 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 could be the case, yeah.
To change the zoning, once we, if we were opt to go on this problem, zoning, planning commission that approve a zoning change, so then. It's once it's changed, just like if we change Marvin Farms to the overlays, it's changed forever, correct? Or am I?
Well, for so long as you're satisfied with it. I mean, you can go through the process of amending the ordinance again if you find it unsatisfactory, but. For those who establish the use in the meantime, while it's a lawful use, they would be grandfathered in at that point where. Even if you change the ordinance.
And the ordinance zoning amendments would follow the property, not necessarily the person. So let's say I I have, I'm allowed to have chickens in my backyard where I live currently, but I move across town. I would have to file. New, a new application with new site plans and all of that in order to move my chickens across town.
Well, it depends on the process that we establish for doing it. If we were gonna make it like a zoning exception used, then yes, it would run with the property. If we're gonna make it a license like a dog license, then that would be personal to you and you would be. The way I would envision it, and I've written some of these in the past. You know, you'll have minimum standards for how they may be capped and you would define. Yeah, placement requirements and perhaps minimum lot sizes. I mean, that's a discussion that needs to be had. And then you define the districts where it was going to be allowed. You know, we have a range of residential districts from smaller lots to larger lots. You know, we'd we'd have to make a decision about which zoning districts we're gonna allow this in. All the single family, the two-family as well, presumably not multiple family. You know, and so depending on which process you choose, it may or may not be site specific.
There, that's all I have.
There's no further discussion on that item. Next item is downtown trash collection. It's Matt. In the meeting.
Yeah, I'm here, Greg.
Okay, you wanna talk about this?
Sure, thank you. So I am bringing this to your attention. We recently. Had a three-year contract with Stevens, who is most of you know. Is our long-term trash and recycling collection provider for the last few years. They have a lot of contracts with us and this one is up to date here soon. They did mention that the that there will be an increase if we choose to stick with them. The increase is a hundred dollars a month for trash collection and ninety dollars a month for recycling collection. And this is for the downtown trash dumpsters. And then that would be for the next year. If we chose to extend it the following year, it would be an additional five percent. So I am looking for guidance and whether you guys would like to stick with our long-term provider Stevens and extend their contract. Or if you would like to see it go out for bid. My plan was to, if we do stick with them. We could put this out for bid with the large trash and recycling contract in two years when we're up with that. So just looking for some guidance, if you guys want to extend the the contract or put it out for bid for the next two years.
I could just add on to that. The last time we did this, if I'm not mistaken, Matt. We ended up getting a price from Stevens, which was higher than the price they offered. Without bidding, but still the lowest price. Is that accurate?
That is correct. That was for a our citywide trash and recycling recycling collection. Same different contract, but yes, they did it higher than what they had offered us in the beginning and they also mentioned that that might be the case here. They said these would be the rates if you guys want to stick with us, but we can't guarantee these rates if you guys decide to go up with it again.
And it's also true that we're out of we're out of contract right now, so we're getting the increase. Effective this month, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's, there would be two more years, and you might have mentioned this, but there would be two more years until the the residential collection contract is also up, is that correct?
That is up in June twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and so your plan would just be to, if the commission agrees to extend. The downtown collection up to out to align with the residential collection.
Correct.
There is a resolution in the pre-meeting packet. If you wanted to take action on this tonight, you could add that to your agenda.
Well, I guess I'll go first. I don't like the business practice of. Here's our price and we can't guarantee it's gonna be there. If you guys said it, I don't like that. I didn't like it when we negotiated the other contract. That's why I voted, no, I don't like it now. So. My preference would be because you can offer a price like like Stevens did, but it comes for our trash collection, but. Then we get hammered on the spring cleanup two straight times and then we eat up all of our solid waste funds. So when we negotiate that contract the first time, I wanted to put. You know, every other year's spring cleanup in there and bid out the whole package, you know, everything we get when it comes to trash receptacle. Purposes bid that all at once and and again, I was in the minority in that vote, but. It never sits well with me when someone, you know, when a vendor says, here's our price, we can't guarantee it's gonna be the same price unless if you guys decide to bid out because. Come with your best price always, because we have fifty over five thousand residential homes here. And I'm sure anybody would like to get our business. So I guess I would like to see it two years down the road, bid it all out at one time. But again, I'm open for whatever anyone else's opinions are.
Wait, clear your comment up right there, Commissioner Health. You would like to see it to to align our city contract with the residential one, so so. Because I think that makes sense is that we get this all with a package and a bow on it and we're very thoughtful as to what our bid package says. And includes the stuff like you said, Christmas trees, all of that stuff. So so we've got our package for three, five, seven years or whatever it is. Is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying. Small increase and then we'll do all the whole jumble a couple of years, so.
That makes sense to me as well.
I agree.
I agree too.
I like it.
Add it to the agenda tonight. Sorry, Gordon.
Well, that was easy. Thank you for that. If you guys would then just make a motion to add the that resolution to the agenda and we will waive the bid process and. Extend the contract for two years in hopes that in a couple of years we can combine everything into one contract.
Thank you, Matt. These are the only scheduled items we have for the pre-meeting, but we've got a few minutes left for public comments.
Yes, at this time, if there is any public comment, please state your your name and address and. Go ahead.
Hello? My name is Matt Shane. I actually live in Washtenaw County, six, seven, three, four Lamb Road, Manchester. I work for MSU Extension. My home office is in Adrian. Just wanted to make a couple of statements on the poultry thing. First of all, just from an extension standpoint, make it very clear that. In MSU Extension, we're not advocating one way or another on the potential ordinance. That's not something that we do in extension, just providing resources. Just want to throw out there that we do have a lot of. Educational materials around backyard flocks. We have some sample ordinance language that is in an extension bulletin format. That I did send to Bob earlier today, if he hadn't already seen that. Through 4H and other youth development work that we do, we do use poultry and some embryology work in the schools, which then does. Generate some chicks that can be used for small flocks in various parts of the county. When we do that work and around the state, we do that quite a bit. So we do have a lot of resources, a lot of materials available on biosecurity. Food safety around egg production through our nutrition programs, also implementation in our nutrition curriculum. For homegrown protein and other things like that that work into folks' diets. So. Be happy to share any of those resources or what kinds of materials we have available. We can do educational programming for both youth and adults on the topic. Should it be something that education, sometimes, you know, in those ordinances or different things, you could have. Maybe an educational requirement that goes along with it to make sure that folks are informed of what they're getting themselves into. Before they would take on an endeavor like raising poultry in their backyard. So just wanted to throw that out there. I believe one of the commissioners mentioned the relationship with the extension in the city. Would be happy to. To work with you on this or a variety of other educational topics that we have resources on. So. Thank you for the time and be happy to answer any questions if and when you have them.
As a teacher, I think that having chicks in families. Location.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes? Joe Roberts.
Yes, thank you.
Adrian. Making it available for families to have chickens would be great. Their families. It's it's a good look, so something to think about.
Hello? Adrian, Michigan, Bud Long Street. I'm really happy to hear about this movement of the backyard chickens and I fully would support this as a resident of Adrian, Michigan.
I am not hearing any more public comment. So may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned. Regular meeting will begin at seven PM. Greg, it is 7 o'clock. Would you be willing right now to give your speech on Zoom?
I am willing. Good evening, everyone. I'm Interim City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's 7 o'clock and I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked the participants, other than the commissioners and staff members, to mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants can unmute themselves and an opportunity to address the commission will be provided. The three-minute rule continues to be in effect for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. When it's time for the, for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be the exact same as it is in person. We'll work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules of procedure remain in effect. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meeting free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut the meeting down if this happens. Our agenda is being, will be displayed on the screen and anyone wishing to access the full commission packet can find it at www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I call to order the September 21st, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hou.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission? Moved to approve the minute. Roberts.
Watson's second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move, pay the vouchers as presented. Hou. Support.
I got Commissioner Gauss on that second. I'm not sure who the other one was.
It was Gauss and Strayer.
Thank you. It was at the exact same time and I couldn't hear. I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Gauss and Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R20-179 from Parks and Engineering Services, the downtown dumpster contract extension with Stevens disposal? So moved. Roberts.
Support. Hou.
I have a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R20-179 from Roberts with a second from Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution 179, R20179 from Parks and Engineering for a downtown dumpster contract extension with Stevens disposal was approved by unanimous vote.
Before we begin into our regular agenda, there are two items that I would just like to take notice of for the public. I would like to pay tribute and, and just have notice given that Sam Rye, our longest-serving mayor in Adrian history, as he was re-elected for five consecutive terms from 1995 to 2005, passed away last week. And I just would like to pay tribute to the service that he did and, and remember him. The other thing I would like to bring your attention to is that we did a flag raising last Tuesday as it is Hispanic Heritage Month, from September 15th through October 15th. We issued a proclamation for that and we do have several flags. We have a Puerto Rican flag and the Mexican flag flying inside City Hall with alongside the American flag. So if you would ever like to come and see that, it is located right outside my office. We had a beautiful ceremony last Tuesday. It was a beautiful evening and issued a proclamation. And we hope that everybody really enjoys this rich heritage that we've had here for many years in the following weeks. Moving on to the regular agenda. Ordinance 20-006, second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 62-40 of Chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code, Use of Parks and Chapter 62 of the Adrian City Code by adding Section 62-44 Camping. May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Move to approve. Watson.
Support. Strayer.
At this time, we are going to ask for public comment, but before we begin, I just want to reiterate, you may only speak once. And this is your time to speak and the commissioner's time to listen. So the commissioners will not be responding to you as this is public comment time. So I just want to make sure that everyone is clear about that and you will only be allowed to speak once. But please state your name if you are ready for public comment. Are there any public comments?
Hello, I would like to comment.
Go ahead.
I'm McKean Ramos, homeowner in the city, South Winters Street, 422. I'm Vice Chair of Human Relations, member of the All About Adrian Coalition, coordinator of Long Way Poor People's Campaign. And I do not support the amendments to this ordinance. I spent time homeless, or I had brief time, but a hard time. I spent months homeless. In that time, I met numerous, numerous homeless people ranging from people younger than me to people my grandparents' age. People whom I couldn't consider any sort of danger. They were just people, people struggling at that time. And any of them likely still struggle. Many of which also couldn't go to shelters because the shelters were too full. And that was pre-COVID. We're now in the midst of a pandemic. Killing people every single day. And that's why we're meeting via Zoom instead of all being in a room together, shaking hands, hugging, talking. But the shelters have decreased the number of people they can hold. Yet despite the number of homeless people, homeless shelters are not increasing, you want to enforce kicking them out of parks. Where do you expect them to go? How are they going to stay somewhere where there's not any room? This is a time where we should be offering help and banding together, especially as many renters, I've seen predictions high 40%, will be getting evicted if they don't get any help. With an eviction crisis, we would see a large increase in homeless people. Making trying to throw them all into one place even more difficult, even more likely to spread COVID and lead to death for them and the shelter volunteers and whatever social workers are trying to help. I also question legality of just taking people's stuff and forcing them to call a number to get it back as well as the safety of contact for both taking the stuff and getting it back to them. Furthermore, there have been studies and attempts to deal with homelessness. The most effective by far is housing-first policies. Giving a homeless person a permanent home, usually just a small little apartment, and putting them in contact with a social worker. Some of you have gone as far as to have someone try to help the residents get jobs when they're ready. And these policies have shown to help homeless people get on their feet, progress towards getting a job, getting off drugs or alcohol, and eventually buying a home that they want and thus bringing revenue to the city. This has also shown to be cheaper than punishing the homeless than taking them to the yard and creating unpleasant or hostile design to hide them or taking away things so they don't go to those areas. This also, there's also grants and tax credits that could cover up to 60% or even more in some cases that as long as these things remain affordable for 30 years, and this would call, cover most of the construction costs. Or more immediately, as a lot of cities have done across the country, you can put them into hotels. A lot of hotels aren't getting much business. So they'll be wanting to take a little bit lower rate to house a bunch of people for an extended period. I'd also like to point out how wrong it is that if you have money and want to go downtown and drink socially, once the self-sauce set up, you can do that till 10:00 PM. Yet the parks during the winter are going to be closing at 5:00, 6:00 PM. The priorities seem a bit skewed, especially considering whom has money and who isn't. I get people want to be in parks and are tired of being stuck at home. However, many don't have a home and they need to be somewhere where they aren't too close to others to spread the pandemic further. Given whom is suffering more, I think we shouldn't harass homeless people, especially during these bleak times. We should be looking at ways to keep them safe and help them get to a better place. The homeless also don't have resources to get a permit to camp every night, whether that is free or worse, actually cause something. It just adds more unneeded burdens and is a form of punishing, a form of punishment. And is this really the best use for law enforcement? We're in COVID times, so distance should be kept and we're in a time where police brutality has been highlighted and police harassment has been highlighted. Is harassing the homeless really what we want our cops to do? Is harassing a pastor trying to give a sermon at 7:00 AM when sunrise is at 8:00 AM really what we want law enforcement dealing with? I hope you all vote against this ordinance and considering some ideas from those connected to the community and with experience of homelessness and the hardships of it. Thank you for your time.
I would like to speak, please.
State your name and, and address and go ahead.
My name is Sister Pat Harvath. I'm one of the Dominican Sisters at 1257 East Santa Heights Drive. I also would like to speak against the ordinance in the name of the Dominican Sisters. At this time of the COVID virus, it is such a serious thing to have people on the streets in the park, but they have nowhere else to go. And if that isn't available to them, they will find other ways that perhaps are not as good to find shelter. I would like to advise the commissioners to think out of the box, to think in a creative way of how we can respond to this homeless population in the city, which continues to grow. To find a way of regulating perhaps how they may be available to stay in the parks, perhaps limiting it to one particular park and that the police would work with the homeless. I realize that there are certainly difficulties for many reasons, mental illness being one. But again, to look at a compassionate response. many reasons, mental illness being one, but again, to look at a compassionate response, how we can tend to that population in particular during this virus. It just seems completely uncompassionate to say that they are not allowed to be near or in the parks at this time, which is just so problematic for all of us. And so I think for their mental health as well as for the mental health of the community, I think it would be important to, to not pass this ordinance, but to look at a way to provide a creative way into the future of providing for the homeless in our city. Thank you.
Ten tow cars, one ten south locust. I guess I find it interesting that City Commission takes time during a pandemic to pick on the homeless. For years now, we've had code enforcement issues, and you guys always say you don't have money or time to take care of code enforcement, but someone, we don't know who complained, but one person or two people complained, and all of a sudden, this goes right to the top of your agenda. You spend all your time on it, you make an ordinance for it, and it's all against the homeless. I'd like to see you use that same speed to take care of code enforcement. Thanks.
I'd like to speak.
Can you state your name?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kara Snyder. I own a home here in Adrian at four-two-two South Winter Street. I am speaking to you tonight out of concern about the proposed changes to the ordinance affecting our city parks. I am worried these changes predominantly affect a population that is already struggling. I am saddened and appalled that under present circumstances, this is how the city chooses to use precious time and resources. As the governing body of the city, you have chosen to take on the responsibility of doing what is best for the city. This encompasses the entirety of the population, not just the few choice overlapping demographics within your personal experience and comfort zone. As many of you know, last year at this time, I was homeless. With the present state of affairs in our nation, it is an easy situation to wind up in. A major medical emergency, a divorce, a lapse of employment, among numerous other options, can push any individual or family unit into homelessness. Think about this for a moment, please. If you were to become homeless, how many people do you know would take you into their homes? I guarantee you from personal experience, it is less than you think. Then also the resources that you all seem to believe are in place around here are ridiculously inadequate. Again, I tell you this from repeated personal experience. Initiative measures toward an already maligned population with very few options during a worldwide pandemic seems unnecessarily cruel to me. These are fellow human beings, parents, children, veterans, disabled, abused people. In Michigan, forty-four percent of the homeless population has a diagnosed disability. Sixty-seven percent of those are mental, and forty-three percent are physical. Of that demographic, twenty-eight percent are considered to have a substance abuse issue. That's a lot of sober homeless people. There are better, more humane ways to resolve this issue, and many of the alternative methods are much more cost-effective. Please do some research and devise a more constructive plan of action. A yes vote on this tonight will result in undue harm and cruelty to an already suffering population and by extension to the local community as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Yes, we would like to speak, my husband and I, Thomas Wasmer and Amy at three-eleven East Butler. I read the article in the paper many weeks back, and I was very disturbed to hear about this ordinance. I would very much like you to vote no. I find it very disheartening and a serious lack of compassion, and we are supposed to be living in a Christian-like community, and to me, this is not Christian-like behavior. And again, it is very disturbing, and I hope that you all really do think about it and you vote no, because as stated before, this could happen to any one of us for any reason. And again, please seriously consider this as a vote of no, and do some research and find alternatives. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
He states.
My name is Calvin Hicks. I reside at nine zero one Braddis Street, lot eighteen, and I am also employed at the Daily Bread of Lenawee as well as Santa Heights University. As someone who, as Mr. Ramos has had to can speak from personal experience, and Ms. Snyder of being homeless, it is a struggle itself and itself enough. And furthermore, um, I work with, with and for, you know, to help about ninety percent of these people that this would directly affect. And I can say many of them do suffer from emotional and, um, mental disability as well as a lot of substance abuse issues. Now, I think a lot of us can already agree, me myself personally, because I've tried to seek these services in the past for myself when I got sober, is that substance abuse and recovery and mental system and mental services and emotional services here in this city already strained as they are. They are very hard to come by. There is not much funding for them. I know that me myself, I had to struggle just to get funded for it when I was court ordered. That right there is already kind of letting down the more vulnerable, vulnerable in the area. And, and my personal opinion, this right here, if voted, if voted in tonight, would just be a further failure for those that need this help the most. Um, I'm just going to keep it short, and that's all I've really got. Thank you.
I would like to speak if possible.
Go ahead, just state your name and you may begin.
Hi, my name's Alexandria Burgess. I reside in Madison Township, but my mother, who this would be regarding, lives at five-nine-one South Main Street. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit in regards to the issue of accessibility for mental health and addiction services. My mother was homeless in twenty seventeen following a health issue that left her in a coma for a month. None of us had access to her bank information, so her bills couldn't be paid. She went into default on her rent and was evicted. Get her back on track. Yeah, you know, she relocated down here, and, you know, she came from an area up in Metro Detroit, which had a lot of, you know, stable mental health services. She was able to check herself into mental health facilities easily, had ample support for addiction and recovery. And when she came down here, she unfortunately relapsed. Luckily, she had me to help support her through the process. But had she been on her own, you know, especially if she was still homeless at the time, you know, we'd gotten her into a place where she could live, but had she been homeless and had she not had, had family like many of these people, you know, who were making this decision that's going to affect them, she could not navigate that process on her own. I see a lot of people commenting on this about, you know, well, these people should be able to take advantage of these resources. They should be able to get help or be willing to get help. And even in the best circumstances, it is not easy to navigate these hoops, especially if you're in the midst of addiction or in the midst of a mental health crisis. We had to take her to Bixby because she was having basically a mental breakdown. She was, she was going into a manic episode, and to deal with that, she drinks. So we took her into Bixby, and immediately the nurse, you know, she was asking, you know, where am I going to go? Where are you guys going to send me? Because she was having suicidal thoughts. And they said, well, let's wait until you sober up. And I had, luckily, I was there, and I could tell them, no, you're not going to write this off as her drinking. She has a serious mental health issue that she's had for decades. You know, most of these people don't have that. So then you have someone who's trying to get resources, who gets kicked back out of the street because someone's not taking them seriously. Then, when she did get referred to go to rehab, the rehab they referred her to is two hours north, and she had to get there herself, because if she waited for their transportation, she'd lose her spot. These people don't have transportation. They don't always have family who can drop what they're doing and drive them two hours to a rehab. So there's a lot more that plays into this, and there's a lot of nuances to working through these resources that I don't think a lot of people on the outside understand. And ticketing people who are homeless, you know, for a myriad of reasons, but especially those who are suffering from mental health issues and addiction, I mean, you're really shooting them while they're down. There's, you know, it's so difficult to navigate when you're alone and at the very bottom of, of where you can be. So I just, it, it upsets me to see that this is being brought for discussion, especially because I know that there's plenty of people in the community who've been advocating for change and more resources and more support for homeless, you know, residents here. And it just, it's upsetting that all the times that this issue has been brought up from a place of compassion and concern for homeless residents, it's been shot down. But the minute that other residents complain, it becomes a priority, and I don't think that's right.
My name is Will Garcia. I would like to make a comment. I live at seven oh four Comstock Street here in Adrian. Based on this proposed ordinance, imminent risk of litigation, the violation of CDC guidelines upon its enforcement, and its lack of meaningful steps towards solving our, solving the problem of getting our unhoused population into permanent housing, which is the only way to improve the situation of camping in public and private areas, I strongly advise the Adrian City Commission to reject the proposed ordinance and seek assistance from the City of Adrian's Human Relations Commission in collaboration with the National Homelessness Law Center, Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness, Lenaway Continuum of Care, members of our unhoused population, and other community stakeholders that have expressed an interest in creating a solution to the root causes of this problem that the city is trying but failing to address in this ordinance. Under section thirty-eight, thirty-one, C two of our city charter, the Human Relations Commission shall aid in protecting the rights of all persons to enjoy public accommodations and facilities. Given that the source of the conflict in this proposed ordinance is over the rights of populations in our city to enjoy or exist in public spaces, the Human Relations Commission is the best-equipped resource that the city possesses to provide advice and counsel to fairly and adequately resolve this conflict. Second, resolution eighteen one ninety-nine states, whereas at these meetings, the commission welcomes and encourages advice and counsel of citizens interested in the welfare of the city, including planning and operations, and whereas public comments related to an ordinance or resolution on the agenda do not have a time limit, but are monitored by the mayor to stay on task, I will be providing advice and counsel in relation to that ordinance. As has been mentioned, the city is at risk of violating CDC protocols and has created a risk for litigation in its pursuit of a camping ban that will not improve the situation. This was mentioned in guidance from the National Homelessness Law Center, which goes as follows. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I write on behalf of the National Homelessness Law Center, or the Law Center, to express our opposition to propose section sixty-two forty-four camping ban. The broad camping ban would outlaw universal and unavoidable life-sustaining conduct, such as eating and sleeping, in all public and private places at all times of day. There is no exemption in the law for people who lack access to housing or indoor shelter, nor any guidance as to how permission to camp in a public space would be sought or provided. As such, the proposed camping ban may be unconstitutional as applies to the homeless population in Adrian. Moreover, the proposed camping ban is an ineffective, expensive, and harmful public policy that will worsen homelessness in the city. We urge you to reject the camping ban and to instead pursue evidence-based strategies for ending and preventing homelessness. The Law Center, formerly known as the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty, is the only national legal advocacy organization dedicated solely to ending and preventing homelessness using the power of the law. We have over thirty years of experience in impact litigation, policy advocacy, and public education. Since two thousand and six, the Law Center has tracked laws punishing homelessness in a hundred and eighty-seven cities across the country, and we have documented the failures, expense, and collateral consequences of those policies in a series of national reports. In addition to raising awareness about ineffective, expensive, and harmful policies punishing homelessness, we litigate across the country to challenge these policies. Discussion. People living outside in Adrian lack sufficient access to housing or emergency shelter. There are approximately six hundred and twenty-five people that are either homeless or in housing crisis in Lenaway County, with an estimated one hundred and ninety-eight of those living on the streets or in emergency shelter. Many of them live within the city of Adrian. These numbers, based on twenty nineteen's point-in-time count reported to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, are generally accepted to be an underestimation of the actual homeless or at-risk population. While, sorry, while Adrian's unhoused population has never had sufficient access to adequate housing or emergency shelter, their options for safe shelter have shrunk even further as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Congregate emergency shelters in Adrian, such as Share the Warmth, are operating at reduced capacity as a result of the pandemic, and they currently have waiting lists for entry. Thus, for many in Adrian, there is literally no choice but to eat and sleep outside. The proposed camping ban may be unconstitutional as applied to homeless people with nowhere else to go. Despite the harsh reality that homeless people in Adrian have no choice but to struggle for survival in outdoor public space, the proposed camping ban would make the biological needs to eat and sleep illegal throughout the entire city at all times of day. There is no exception in the proposed camping ban for those who lack access to housing or indoor shelter, nor is there any guidance on how to seek permission to camp outside lawfully. As a result, many people living outside in Adrian will be unable to comply with the law and thus unable to avoid punishment for their homeless status. This cruel result is not tolerated by the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which forbids punishment based on a person's involuntary status or conduct inextricably linked with that status. As explained by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, under U.S. Supreme Court precedent on the Eighth Amendment's cruel and unusual punishment clause, a government may not criminalize homeless status nor conduct that is unavoidable, that is an unavoidable consequence of being homeless, such as sleeping on the streets, Martin v. Boise. The Ninth Circuit is not alone in this interpretation of Eighth Amendment jurisprudence. To do see Manning v. Caldwell, see also Blake versus City of Grants pass. Given the serious constitutional concerns raised by the proposed camping ban as applied to homeless people in Adrian, the Law Center urges the city to vote no on proposed section sixty-two forty-four. Doing otherwise risks violating the constitutional rights of homeless people in Adrian and risks disclosing the city to expensive litigation in defense of a misguided camping ban. Along with being legally suspect, the proposed camping ban is ineffective and harmful public policy. Punishing people who live outside because they lack meaningful alternatives serves no constructive purpose. A human being cannot forego eating or sleeping, no matter the punishment, for those universal and inherently innocent activities. Moreover, punishment does not create more opportunities for shelter and housing, and thus it will not reduce the number of people who live outside for lack of other options. Indeed, the expense and collateral consequences of enforcement of the camping ban will reduce the number of resources that people have available to lawfully feed and shelter themselves. The costliness of enforcement will also reduce the amount of resources that the City of Adrian has to invest in constructive policy solutions to end homelessness. Along with wasting public resources on issuing citations to people who cannot comply with the camping ban, this misguided policy also directly threatens access to federal funding to provide homeless services. For several years, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has asked questions on its funding application for its two-point-five-billion-dollar continuum of care funding stream to reward communities that have implemented constructive solutions to end homelessness and restrict funding for those that continue punishment strategies. In addition to being ineffective and costly, the proposed camping ban also threatens public health by reducing homeless people's options for social, socially-isolated shelter during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. COVID-19 pandemic. Access to private shelter, even if the form of shelter is not optimal, is important to curbing the spread of the deadly coronavirus. In recognition of this fact, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, has advised cities to not displace people experiencing homelessness from their private shelters in outdoor communities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Specifically, the CDC states, if individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. Clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with service providers. This increases the potential for infectious disease spread. Even if we were not in the midst of a deadly pandemic, reducing shelter options for homeless people is harmful to public health. The cold winter months, where average temperatures in Adrian dip below the freezing point, are fast approaching. The camping ban will force people to make the impossible choice between breaking the law or risking dangerous exposure to outdoor elements without rudimentary shelter or even blankets to warm themselves. Whether viewed for a legal, fiscal, or moral lens, the proposed camping ban is not advisable for Adrian. We all share the goal of people no longer living in outdoor public space, but homelessness cannot be punished out of existence. Instead, the most cost-effective, humane, and permanent way to end homelessness is to ensure that people living outside have access to permanent housing. Numerous studies have shown that communities actually save money and improve health outcomes by providing housing and services to those in need, rather than endlessly cycling people from one location to another, or by saddling them with expensive tickets or criminal penalties. We urge you to reject the camping ban and to instead pursue evidence-based strategies for ending and preventing homelessness, such as those described in the reports referenced herein. I am happy to discuss this matter with you at your convenience, and I may be reached at tbauman@nchhp.org, or at, and her number was included there. So that was the letter that was given from the National Homelessness Law Center. And the, one of the biggest risks for the city in pursuing this is the risk of litigation. Bell v. Boise is established case, or was cited by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, a federal court, and also had a Department of Justice statement of interest for the United States, which goes as follows. On any given night in the United States, half a million people are likely to be experiencing homelessness. Homeless individuals are a diverse population, including children, families, veterans, and the elderly. The causes of homelessness are also varied. In recent years, some people who were affected by the economic downturn and foreclosure crisis have become homeless. Some homeless individuals have serious and pertinent physical or behavioral health conditions that neither they nor the communities in which they live have sufficient services to accommodate. As a result, these individuals are unable to obtain permanent housing. Other individuals are homeless because of circumstances beyond their control. They are victims of domestic violence and trafficking, or youth who are separated from their families. These individuals must find a space in public shelter or sleep on the street. For many homeless people, finding a safe and legal place to sleep can be difficult or even impossible. In many cities, shelters are unable to accommodate all who are homeless. In 2014, forty-two percent of homeless individuals slept in unsheltered public locations, under bridges, in cars, in parks, on the sidewalk, or in abandoned buildings. In this case, plaintiffs are homeless individuals who were convicted of violating city ordinances that prohibit camping and sleeping in public outdoor spaces. They claim that the city of Boise and the Boise Police Departments, or BPD, enforcement of these ordinances against homeless individuals violates their constitutional rights because there is inadequate shelter space available in Boise to accommodate the city's homeless population. Plaintiffs argue that criminalizing public sleeping in a city without adequate shelter space constitutes criminalizing homelessness itself in violation of the Eighth Amendment. The parties disagree about the appropriate framework for analyzing plaintiffs' claims. Plaintiffs encleraged the court to follow Jones v. City of Los Angeles, which held that enforcement of anti-camping ordinances may violate the Eighth Amendment on nights where there is inadequate shelter space available for all the city's homeless individuals. Defendants, on the other hand, assert that plaintiffs' reliance on Jones is heavily misplaced, factually unsupported, and immaterial to this case. Because the summary judgment briefing in this case makes clear that there is significant dispute between the parties on the applicability of Jones and conflicting lower court case law in this area, the United States files this statement of interest to make clear that the Jones framework is the appropriate legal framework for analyzing plaintiffs' Eighth Amendment claims. Under the Jones framework, the court should consider whether conforming one's conduct to the ordinance is possible for people who are homeless. If sufficient shelter space is unavailable because (a) there are inadequate beds for the entire population, or (b) there are restrictions on those beds that disqualify certain groups of homeless individuals, like because of disability access or exceeding maximum stay requirements, then it would be impossible for some homeless individuals to comply with these ordinances, as set forth below. In those circumstances, enforcement of the ordinances amounts to the criminalization of homelessness in violation of the Eighth Amendment. Interest of the United States: The United States has authority to file this statement of interest pursuant to 28 U.S.C. 517, which permits the Attorney General to attend the interests of the United States in any case pending a federal court. Pursuant to the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994, the United States enforces the rights of individuals to be free from unconstitutional and abusive policing. The United States has used its authority under Section 14141 to investigate numerous jurisdictions for unconstitutional police practices. The United States also has a broad interest in ensuring that justice is applied fairly, regardless of wealth or status. In 2010, Attorney General Eric Holder launched the Office for Access to Justice, or ATJ, at the Department of Justice to address the access-to-justice crisis in the criminal and civil justice systems. ATJ's mission is to help the justice system deliver outcomes that are fair and accessible to all. ATJ works with other federal agencies on a range of programs and policies affecting low-income and vulnerable people, including agencies that work to prevent and end homelessness. The United States also has an interest in breaking the cycle of poverty and criminalization. Numerous federal initiatives are tasked with reducing the criminalization of homelessness and promoting alternatives to incarceration that are more cost-effective, efficient, and fair. For example, the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, composed of nineteen cabinet secretaries and agency heads, coordinates federal efforts to end homelessness. USICH was established through the Stuart B. McKinney Homeless Assistance Act in 1987 and was most recently reauthorized in 2009 with the passage of the Homeless Emergency Assistance and Rapid Transition to Housing Act. In 2010, USICH and ATJ, with support from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, held a summit called Searching for Balance: Civic Engagement in Communities Responding to Homelessness on the Development of Constructive Alternatives to the Criminalization of Homelessness. A related report, Searching Out Solutions: Constructive Alternatives to Criminalization, explores themes raised at the summit. HUD also produced a guide, Reducing Homeless Population's Involvement in the Criminal Justice System, intended to raise awareness among law enforcement and service providers about available resources to serve homeless people and those at risk of homelessness who are involved in the criminal justice system. Discussion: The cruel and unusual punishment clause of the Eighth Amendment imposes substantive limits on what can be made criminal and punished, and punished as such. See Ingram v. Wright. Pursuant to that clause, the Supreme Court has held that laws that criminalize an individual's status rather than specific conduct are unconstitutional. Robertson v. California. In Robinson, the court considered a state statute criminalizing not only the possession or use of narcotics, but also addiction, noting that the statute made an addicted person continuously guilty of this offense, whether or not he had ever used or possessed any narcotics within the state, and further that addiction is a status which may be contracted innocently or involuntarily, and given that a person may be even a narcotics addict from the moment of his birth, the court found that the statute impermissibly criminalized the status of addiction and thus constituted cruel and unusual punishment. Six years after Robinson, the court addressed whether certain acts may also not be subject to punishment under the Eighth Amendment if they are unavoidable consequences of one's status. In Powell v. Texas, the court considered the constitutionality of a statute that criminalized public intoxication. A four-member plurality interpreted Robinson to prohibit only the criminalization of status and noted that the statute, under consideration in Powell, criminalized conduct being intoxicated in public rather than the status of alcohol addiction. The plurality declined to extend Robinson, citing concerns of federalism and reluctant to create a constitutional doctrine of criminal responsibility. Moreover, the plurality found that there was insufficient evidence to definitively say Mr. Powell was incapable of avoiding public intoxication. The dissenting justices, on the other hand, found that the Eighth Amendment protects against criminalization of conduct that individuals are powerless to avoid, and that due to his alcoholism, Mr. Powell was powerless to avoid public drunkenness. The dissenters, therefore, would have reversed Mr. Powell's conviction. Justice White provided the fifth, the decisive fifth vote to uphold Mr. Powell's conviction. Instead of joining the plurality opinion, in a separate concurrence, he set forth a different interpretation of Robinson. Justice White did not risk his decision on the status versus conduct distinction raised by the plurality. Instead, Justice White considered the voluntariness or volitional nature of the conduct in question. See Powell. Under this analysis, if sufficient evidence is presented showing that the prohibited conduct was involuntary due to one's condition, criminalization of that conduct would be impermissible under the Eighth Amendment. Notably for the present case, Justice White specifically contemplated the circumstances of individuals who are homeless. He explained that, for all practical purpose, the public streets may be home for these unfortunates, not because their disease compels them to be there, but because drunk or sober, they have no place else to go and no place else to be when they are drinking. Justice White believes some alcoholics who are homeless could show that resisting drunkenness is impossible, and that avoiding public places while intoxicated is also impossible. For these individuals, the statute is, in effect, a law which bans a single act for which they may not be convicted under the Eighth Amendment, the act of getting drunk. Ultimately, Justice White decided with the plurality, because Mr. Powell did not present evidence to show that he was incapable of avoiding public places while intoxicated. Justice White's concurrence articulated the narrowest grounds for the decision. Accordingly, it is the only controlling precedent from Powell, see Marx v. United States, explaining the narrowest position controls when no rationale garners the votes of the majority of the court. Robinson and Powell have resulted in division among courts over how to analyze claims regarding enforcement of anti-camping ordinances against homeless individuals. Because Powell did not produce a majority opinion on whether the Eighth Amendment prohibits only the criminalization of status or also the criminalization of involuntary conduct, it does not provide a binding test for how courts should analyze these issues. Some courts have adopted the plurality's strict interpretation of Robinson, opining that the Eighth Amendment limits only the criminalization of status, not of conduct. See Lehr versus City of Sacramento, finding the Eighth Amendment inapplicable when a statute criminalizes conduct and not status. Others have considered the voluntariness of the conduct and whether the conduct is inextricably linked to one's status, such that punishing the conduct is indistinguishable from punishing the status. See versus Jones, finding anti-camping ordinance violated Eighth Amendment because it criminalized sleeping in public when homeless individuals had no choice but to sleep in public, and therefore criminalized the status of homeless itself. Also, see Johnson v. City of Dallas, Pottinger v. City of Miami. Finally, some courts have avoided the debate altogether by deciding a case on factual grounds. See Joel v. City of Orlando, not deciding the legal issue of whether the Eighth Amendment reaches conduct that is inextricably linked to status because Orlando proved the voluntary nature of public sleeping by presenting unrefuted evidence. The city's large homeless shelter has never reached maximum capacity, and that no individual has been turned away because there was no space available or failure to pay the $1 nightly fee. And Allen v. City of Sacramento, upholding an anti-camping ordinance because the plaintiffs failed to allege why they had no shelter. The differing interpretations of Robinson and Powell have caused drastically different results for both individuals and the criminal justice system. In the mid-1990s, the United States twice filed briefs in appellate cases to help clarify the Eighth Amendment analysis for claims brought by individuals who were convicted of violating anti-camping ordinances. See Brief for the United States as Amicus Qure, Joyce versus City and County of San Francisco. Brief for the United States, Toby v. Santa Ana. In those briefs, the United States took the position, as it does here, that criminalizing sleeping in public when no shelter is available violates the Eighth Amendment by criminalizing status. In the twenty years since the United States has last weighed in on this issue, the analyses of these statutes have remained divergent. Consistent with the position taken in previous findings, the United States now urges the court to adopt the reasoning of Jones v. City of Los Angeles. Although the Ninth Circuit ultimately vacated its opinion on Jones pursuant to a settlement agreement between the parties, not for any substantive reason, its logic remains instructive and persuasive. The Jones court considered the enforcement of a Los Angeles ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping in public. There, like here, the court was asked to consider a statute that, on its face, criminalized conduct rather than status. Importantly, plaintiffs in the Jones, plaintiffs in Jones presented evidence that there was an inadequate number of shelter beds available for homeless individuals, so many individuals had no choice but to sleep in public violation of the city's ordinance. The Jones court found enforcement of the ordinance to be unconstitutional as applied to the plaintiffs because of inadequate shelter space. The court based its decision on its conclusion that whether sitting, lying, and sleeping are defined-
Alan's about to get pissed. There's just no way out of this.
Unavoidable consequences of being human. Sleeping is unavoidable. That the court then considered whether the plaintiffs had a choice to sleep in public, concluding that they did not. For homeless individuals in Los Angeles, Skid Row, who have no access to private spaces, these acts can only be done in public. As a result, the court found that sleeping in public is involuntary and inseparable from an individual's status or condition of being homeless when no shelter space is available. The court concluded that, under these circumstances, by criminalizing sitting, lying, and sleeping, the city of Los Angeles is, in fact, criminalizing plaintiff's status as homeless individuals. Defendants assert that reliance on Jones would be misplaced, factually unsupported, and immaterial to this case. In advocating against the applicability of Jones, defendants rely on a conduct versus status distinction that does not withstand close scrutiny, stating that the Boise ordinances avoided criminalizing status by making conduct an element of the crime. However, defendant's position is unpersuasive because the Eighth Amendment analysis is not limited to a reading of the plain language statute in question. Rather, the practical implications of enforcing the statute's language are equally important. Those implications are clear when there is insufficient shelter space to accommodate the homeless population. The conduct of sleeping in a public place is indistinguishable from the status of homelessness. Supreme Court precedent suggests as much. As the court, as the Jones court correctly noted, Powell is best read as providing support for plaintiff's argument against the criminalization of involuntary sleeping in public, not as posing a barrier to that position. Indeed, five members of the Powell court, Justice White and the four dissenting justices, believe that punishing truly involuntary or unavoidable conduct resulting from status would violate the Eighth Amendment. Only four justices would have helped otherwise. It should be uncontroversial that punishing conduct that is a universal and unavoidable consequence of being human violates the Eighth Amendment. It is a foregone conclusion that human life requires certain acts, among them, sleeping. As the Jones court noted, it is impossible for individuals to avoid sitting, lying, and sleeping for days, weeks, or months at a time, as if human beings could remain in perpetual motion. Once an individual becomes homeless by virtue of this status, certain life necessities, such as sleeping, that would otherwise be performed in private must now be performed in public. Therefore, sleeping in public is precisely the type of universal and unavoidable conduct that is necessary for human survival for homeless individuals who lack access to shelter space. In this way, the Boise anti-camping and disorderly conduct ordinances are akin to the ordinance at issue in Robinson, at least on nights when homeless individuals are, for whatever non-volitional reasons, unable to secure shelter space. When adequate shelter space exists, individuals have a choice about whether or not to sleep in public. However, when adequate shelter space does not exist, there is no meaningful distinction between the status of being homeless and the conduct of sleeping in public. Sleeping is a life-sustaining activity. It must occur at some time in some place. If a person literally has nowhere else to go, then enforcement of the anti-camping ordinance against this person criminalizes her for being homeless. Adopting the Jones court's approach would not implicate the knotty concerns raised by the Powell plurality incited by the district courts that depart from Jones. In Powell, the plurality was concerned with the cruel and unusual punishment clause becoming the ultimate arbiter of the standards of criminal responsibility. The justices in the Powell plurality declined to extend the Eighth Amendment prohibition to the punishment of involuntary conduct because they feared doing so would allow violent defendants to argue that their conduct was compelled by any number of conditions. The plurality was reluctant to defy some sort of insanity test in constitutional terms. But these concerns are not at issue, whereas here, they are applied to conduct that is essential to human life and wholly innocent, such as sleeping. No inquiry is required to determine whether a person is compelled to sleep. We know that no one can stay awake in-
Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you've had quite some time to speak, and our commission rules do require that you confine your comments to the exact issue at hand. And though I can understand your passion about this, the case law that you're citing from is not on point for the state of Michigan. It's not binding on the state of Michigan, and you're also referring to the dissent opinion, which does not apply to the issue at hand this evening. So I have to ask that you would pass your comment at this time to other people within the public meeting who would- who would like to speak and are speaking up in the chat box, saying that they would like to have an opportunity for a public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we're not following the rules, can you confirm that we can go six minutes and that we can speak multiple times?
We are following the rules, Mr. Tokar, and the rules apply to things that are on the agenda. Do not have a time limit of three minutes, as you've often been able to allow to speak longer than that yourself when speaking on specific agenda items. But when it comes to the public comment portion, at the end of the meeting, there is a three-minute time limit. And I do believe that this was Mr. Garcia's first time to speak this evening, so he's not violated any rules.
I apologize.
What now?
What jar?
Good evening. My name is Scott Holt, and I am speaking as a citizen living at 336 Ferguson Avenue. I could be wrong, but I think I might be the only one that will be speaking that lives less than 100 feet from a city park. The windows you see over my shoulder, in my opinion, have the absolute best view of Fee Park in the neighborhood. Being directly in the corner of Ferguson Avenue, Greg and I have an unobstructed view of the park from both first and second floors. Our household is in favor of this change of ordinance 20-006. September 24th will mark our 20th anniversary of living at 336 Ferguson. We and our neighbors have been active in supporting the park, working formally for the past seven years, planting, weeding, mulching, and providing general maintenance. Almost 20 years, we have had citizens dwelling in the park gazebo, leaving empty bottles, food wrappers, prophylactics, and other items of a personal nature. Each of these times, neighborhood residents have cleaned up the mess that have been left behind. We take great pride in our efforts to maintain Fee Park since it is a source of revenue for the city and a focal point, being right on South Main Street and less than a mile from downtown. Just last week, the park hosted a wedding. While I have concerns about Fee Park, I am also concerned about our property at 439 Alice Street, which is being used as the Alice Street Community Garden. While this is private property, I don't want to address future issues of people loitering or dwelling on this piece of property. With that said, our household is also concerned about the homeless population that exists in our community. Community involvement is a priority of ours. I hope many of you attended the concert presented by Kiara Scurro, Community Men's Chorus, last February, which benefited neighbors of whole. Greg and I are founding members of the chorus. And as a community, we need to find a solution for our city's homeless population that is dignified, safe, and sustainable, and let our city leaders focus on the ordinance that protects our citizens and maintain the quality of life every citizen deserves. Again, we support the changes to ordinance 20-006, and thank you for your time.
I would like to have something to say, if at all possible. My name is D'Angelo Boone, and I am a member of the Human Relations Commission as well as a member of this A3 All About Age and Resident Coalition. And I also am also a local pastor as well. And regarding the criminalization of the homeless within the community and the potential park ordinance, I think that it would be important for us to move in a different direction than this particular ordinance and work to formulate a plan to deal with the homelessness issues in age range in Michigan and come up with a better solution that is dignified and maybe more cost-effective than utilizing police to enforce this particular ordinance in community parks. And I think that I'm having and working with our local partners in trying to come up with a solution for homelessness is a better approach to deal with the homeless situation within our parks. Of course, we want our parks to be properly maintained and properly cared for. And we don't want individuals camping and sleeping in the parks. However, we are faced with this situation where there's many homeless that have no other solution. And I think that it falls on us as community leaders, as community members, to come up with a plan that better serves the homeless than just trying to enforce this particular ordinance. And also just briefly to speak with the time changes for the park. I think that even with that, just looking at a different way to deal with the community park hours would be better as well. To have it from sun to sunset limits individuals' opportunities to interact at the park and to enjoy our parks as well. So I don't want to take up a lot of time with that as we prepare a speech for it, but I just wanted to speak to that somewhat, that I think that we should take a different direction as to our approach to how we deal with the homeless in our community and even partner with other organizations and like-minded organizations that are dealing with homeless to find better solutions. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners?
Go ahead.
Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. So my wife and I have been volunteers that share the warmth over the past few years, not so much recently. But I would urge you to step back and reconsider where you're at right here. This is a very, very difficult issue. And although I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and for the most part, I agree with it, but I think we have to address the larger issues that many people have talked about tonight. So why not put this on the back burner for a little bit, spend more time talking to the community about it? Tonight was a great opportunity. I'd like to see us hold the discourse a little bit, maybe three minutes or maybe not 30 minutes. But anyway, so, sorry, Mr. Garcia, not to pick on you, but anyway, I'd like to see you step back and reevaluate this whole situation. Well, thank you.
If I may?
Go ahead. State your name.
Yes, my name is Socorro Sevilla. I am the owner and clinical social worker of Hilltop Counseling, located in downtown Adrian at 115 West Mommy Street. I have the opportunity to work with a lot of individuals that I've gotten familiar over the past couple of years. I've been downtown with a number of the homeless individuals who reside downtown. And as a mental health provider, we talk about services, but I know that there's very limited services available to people. As far as mental health, an eight-week wait is pretty typical around here. And our homeless, a lot of them are dealing with mental health issues, developmental disabilities, family issues that have put them on the streets, a lot of times conflict because of those diagnoses. I'm concerned that we're jumping straight to punitive, and there's been very little discussion of how we better support these people. So in the Housing First that Joaquina talked about, other people, D'Angelo talked about, different supports for these homeless folks. And I don't understand why we're jumping to punitive without at all talking about how we support and how we intervene and how we help these people get out the parks before we talk about punishing them for sleeping in the parks. I hope that's something we can stop and talk about before we get to this point. And like the last gentleman said, maybe put this on the back burner for a while. Thank you very much.
You're muted, Andy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Andy Wilcox, 564 South Winter Street. I had gone to a couple parks in the past two days, and I saw that the signs for this ordinance are already up, saying that it is the law when it hadn't even been voted on yet. I think that that's distasteful and disheartening, knowing that we're already claiming something to be law and putting up signs before it's even voted on. Also, a lot of the homeless community didn't even know about this. Like, it hasn't been talked to with them about this. They had no idea that this is something that they actually have to be careful about now. So I'd like to read about Housing First. Housing is a human right. While three-quarters of Americans agree that housing is a human right, an increasing number of elected officials are addressing it as such. Our country has not put in place the policies to ensure that right-- Sorry. --to ensure that right. And as a consequence, millions of Americans experience homelessness and a national crisis that gets worse each year. Many people are experiencing homelessness and have no choice but to live outside. Yet cities routinely punish or harass the unhoused people for their presence in public places. Nationwide, people without housing are ticketed, arrested, and jailed under laws that treat their life-sustaining conduct, such as sleeping or sitting down, as civil or criminal offenses. In addition, cities routinely displace homeless people from public spaces without providing any permanent housing alternatives. This report, the only national report of its kind, provides an overview of laws in effect across the country that punish homelessness. With the assistance of law firms, Decher, LLP, Sullivan, and Cromwell, and Kirkland and Ellis, the law center examined the city's codes of 187 urban and rural cities across the country. Through online research, we identified laws that restrict or prohibit different categories of conduct performed by homeless people, including sleeping, sitting, or laying down, and living in vehicles within public space. We refer to these policies and their enforcement collectively as criminalization of homelessness, even though these laws are punishable as both criminal and civil offenses. The ordinances from our research group of 187 cities are listed in Prohibited Conduct Chart in Appendix A. While the chart catalogs the existence of these laws in different cities, actual enforcement of them may vary widely. Punishments also vary. Some laws subject homeless people to as much as six months in jail, while some result in expensive fines, fees, and/or displacement from public space. Threats of enforcement are also used to harass homeless people and to displace them from location to location. It is important to note that these 180 cities are only a sampling. Criminalization ordinances exist in many more municipalities than just the ones covered here. In addition to our survey of policies enforced across the country, this report describes trends in criminalization laws and tracks that significant growth of these laws since we began tracking them 13 years ago and since the release of Housing Not Handcuffs, our last report on criminalization of homelessness in 2016. This report also describes why criminalization policies are ineffective, harmful, expensive to taxpayers, and often legal. Because our end goal is not to protect the right to live on the streets, but rather ensure people need not live without housing in the first place, we also offer constructive alternative approaches to preventing and ending homelessness. Included in our recommendations are model policies for federal, state, and local governments to address homelessness in a cost-effective, humane, and legal way. The Affordable Housing Crisis and the Growth of Homelessness. Rising rents, stagnant wages, historically low rental vacancy rates, and the severe decline of federally subsidized housing have led to critical shortage of affordable housing units. There is simply not enough affordable and available housing for Americans, millions of low-income renters, leaving them at risk of homelessness. I rent. Nationwide, there are only 35 units that are affordable and available for every 100 extremely poor renter households in need. The Affordable Housing Gap is even more severe in many of the nation's large metropolitan areas. The result is that low-income renter households are housing cost burdened, meaning they are forced to pay more than they can substantially afford toward rent, sustainably afford toward rent. Housing cost burdens and eviction cause homelessness. Recent studies have demonstrated that the strong connection between rental costs, housing cost burdens, and homelessness. For example, one study predicted that homelessness in New York City would increase by over 6,000 people if rents increased by 10%. Unaffordable rents result in evictions for non-payment of rent even after a single night or mispayment. Eviction is not only a direct cause of homelessness. A record of eviction can also bar someone from being rehoused. Housing cost burdens eviction have contributed to grossly disproportionate rates of homeless among people of color. People of color make up the majority of housing cost burdens to renters at risk of eviction. And once housing is lost, racist housing practices prevent people from becoming rehoused. It is thus uprising that there is a heavy over-representation of people of color in the homeless population, according to HUDD's most recent point in time count. Black people make up 40% of the homeless population, yet 13% of the general population. Latinx, Native American, and Pacific Islander rates of homelessness are also disproportionately high in total. People of color constitute over 60% of the nation's homelessness population, even though they make up only a third of the general U.S. population. People without housing lack options for meeting their basic human needs for rest and shelter. Many communities treat emergency shelters as the answer to systemic shortages of permanent housing. And they often justify enforcement of criminalization laws based on alleged availability of emergency shelter beds. But emergency shelters are not available in every community. With unhoused people, and even if shelters did exist, they are generally full and routinely turn people away at the front door. Moreover, emergency shelters, only temporary shelters, sometimes for a single night at a time, and frequently require that people separate from their families, beloved pets, or property upon entry, or subject themselves to religious--
Ms. Wilcox, Ms. Wilcox, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I have to remind again that we have to stay with the issue at hand. And the ordinance that we're addressing tonight is specifically with regard to the park ordinance and the ability to be in parks. It is not about homeless shelters or the statistics of the homeless all over the country. And though I can appreciate that that is a population that is affected by this ordinance, we cannot continue to allow you to read from--
--have Housing First--
You're going to be muted if you continue because you cannot continue to read in public comment when it is not directly related to the issue at hand.
This is about the issue, and other people have talked about Housing First.
And I understand that, and we've heard that comment this evening. However, we are not addressing an ordinance about housing tonight. We are addressing an ordinance with regard to the park regulation.
No, I'm in all right now. No, actually, other people have discussed Housing First and went over three minutes. So I am staying on topic, and I feel like I'm being cut off on how long I'm going--
I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I did have to cut off the last person who went over that time and continued to talk about things that were not directly on point, and I cannot allow it to continue to happen. I do apologize, but if you would like to talk about how this directly relates to the city of Adrian and the park ordinance that is on the agenda this evening, I will not stop you from discussing that. But if you're going to continue to discuss the nationwide crisis as not directly related to the topic tonight--
So I am being cut off for time and not on staying on topic. Thank you.
You're being cut off for not staying on topic?
For time. I'm being cut off for--
I stand with what I said, for not staying on topic. If you would like to change your topic, you are welcome to continue.
I would like to stay on topic by continuing to read this.
Well, I'm not going to debate it with you, but I've given the guidelines.
All right.
Before we continue, I'm going to take a five-minute recess so that if anyone needs to use the restroom or take a break, we will continue after a five-minute recess.
I do not see all the commissioners back, so I'm waiting a couple minutes until they're And they all just appeared. Okay. Continuing on, we will continue on with public comment. Just a reminder, if you have already spoken, you have already used your public comment time, but if there's anybody new that would still like to comment during the public comment time, you may do so now, just please state your name before beginning.
Andrea Bernard, can you hear me?
Barely. You're very quiet.
I'm not muted.
You're fine, just speak loud. You're okay.
Okay, 1340 West Maple Avenue, Adrian, Michigan. I am on the Human Relations Commission. I'd just like to say, Madam Mayor, that it sounds like we have a large group of people that would like to let you know how passionate they are about this issue of not only the parks but the homelessness. What I would like to suggest, if that is possible and you would allow us to, is to put together the possibility of having a town hall with questions and concerns that people can bring to us and let the HRC, well, most of the commissioners have already been speaking to the people that are homeless and people that are going to be affected by the parks and also by the issue of the early, early closing of the parks. So since we already have a commission that is willing to work on that issue with the city and also make sure that the questions and concerns that the people have expressed on this evening, if we could possibly take that issue up in a town hall, get questions and things answered before you do the final vote, and/or if you do vote tonight and you decide that you would allow us to be part of getting solutions to the problem that we will be facing after this is done. So the HRC is willing to work very hard, which some of them are already working at it, and we would like to help solve some of the issues that we can. And I know it's more difficult now because we're dealing with the pandemic, but we are
Hearing no more public comments, before we go into commissioner comments, I would like to ask our city attorney, Tamara S. Hennigan, to please address this before we begin the commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle, if you could please put up the screen share with the PowerPoint. As Michelle's doing that, I do just want to say that I heard the comments this evening, and I can appreciate all of the advocacy for homelessness. I would like to encourage all those organizations that have spoken out today or have been working with that population to also work with the city. To date, I've not had any personal contact from anyone with regard to this proposed amendments with any of these organizations, and I'm not sure that the interim city administrator has either, but we're happy to work with finding solutions for homelessness. As I stated earlier, that is not what the real issue is here tonight. So just really quickly, so that there can be clarification for the community, I want to go through a couple of quick slides with regard to our current ordinance and what the proposed amendments, what proposed amendment would actually make happen. Michelle, could you go to the next slide, please? So currently, there's four applicable sections of Article II in the Conduct in Parks ordinances that actually apply to behavior in parks and address the issues that have been brought up here this evening. Section 6233, Injury to Park, reads that no person shall obstruct any walk in any public park or playground. And that basically applies to the issues that we've been seeing happening on the trail, where the trail cannot be effectively used. If individuals are loitering there, sleeping there, anything like that, then it's being obstructed. And so that in itself is a violation of our current ordinance. Section 6234, for waste container and littering, no person shall place or deposit any garbage, glass, tin, can, paper, or miscellaneous waste in any park or playground. This applies to the things that you heard the person in public comment speak about, where there are items within the park that are left behind that are not put into waste containers, some of those items being rather dangerous, including hypodermic needles, glass bottles, propylactics, as he mentioned. And these type of things are being left behind in the parks regularly and leaving not only the residents who choose to use the park in danger, but also the DPW employees who work for the city who are charged to go out and clean up when the parks are used. Third, there is currently an ordinance, part of our ordinance, section 6236 for picnics, which specifically permits you to eat in the park. Picnics may be held in such parts of the parks as shall be designated by the director for such purpose. When we're looking at the law, we cannot only look at the one section that's being amended, but we have to look at that article as a whole. And all of these ordinances are part of the current Article II and are already in place. In addition, you can see that the fourth one is section 6237, Fires. No person shall kindle or build fires in any park or playground except in fireplaces, grills, or stoves provided for such purpose, meaning that you are allowed to eat in the You are allowed to cook, to do that within the rules and regulations that are applicable to the parks. Next slide, Michelle. Additionally, section 6241, our current language, violations of municipal civil infraction, unless otherwise stated in this article, a person who violates any provision of this article, which is Article II that we're speaking of, is responsible for a municipal civil infraction. I point that out to say that this has always been the case, and civil infraction has always been the penalty, and that we are not seeking to change the level of the penalty from a civil infraction to a criminal prosecution. So all of these things that I've brought up so far with regard to how we operate in the parks are subject to civil infraction if they're violated. So moving on to what the proposed language is in section 6244, which is the only new section that we are proposing. In the proposed language for camping, you'll find three important definitions. Camp means to reside, sleep overnight, inhabit and/or dwell temporarily or longer with or without shelter. Shelter includes but is not limited to a tent, tarpaulin, lean-to, sleeping bag, bedroll, blankets, or any other form of protection from the elements other than the clothing the individual's wearing. And reside or dwell includes but is not limited to activities such as eating, sleeping, and/or storage of personal property. Next, Michelle. Thank you. So here you have a side-by-side comparison of our current language that you see in orange and the proposed language, where I have everything that matches the current in blue, and the new language is actually in red. So you can see that currently, section 6240 of our ordinance reads that no person shall loiter, be in, remain in, or upon any public park or public playground in the city between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM without having license to do so. The only change in the new language is that we have included parking lots and the public trail because we wanted to clarify that those were part of what the Parks and Recs Department maintains and therefore fall as a park. And then we did, we did propose to change the language from sunset to sunrise so that it would go along with the change of seasons, so that in the summertime, there would be later hours that you could be there, but in the wintertime, when it gets dark, the hours would be shorter. And then finally, you'll see that the only other change is that there is a caveat that the trail can be used at all times so long as it's involving continuous movement. So if you would like to walk your dog, if you would like to use a trail to go to and from work, if you'd like to use a trail to go to and from your, any other destination, so long as you are in continuous movement on the trail, then you will be able to do that. Next, Michelle. So under our current status of Article II, the current language that we have, if someone was sleeping on the trail, that violates section 6233 by obstructing a walkway, as I spoke of. If you're littering or leaving trash in the park, including hypodermic needles, alcohol bottles, paper, garbage, and other miscellaneous items, that violates section 6234 by failing to place waste in the designated containers. Remaining in the park overnight is a violation of section 6240 in its current format because if you remain after 11:00 PM, you're violating the code because the park is closed. The same as if a store closes, you cannot enter the store after it closes. When the park closes, you are not legally permitted to be in the park. However, eating in the park is permitted, and additionally, cooking in the park is permitted so long as those activities are within the constraints of the rules and regulations, and there are no proposed amendments to these sections. Camping currently violates section 6240 if you're camping overnight because you would have to remain in the park after it's closed. However, it may be authorized as a special event under the proposed amendment. And again, all of the above violations are municipal civil infractions, with the exception of section 6233, which is actually a misdemeanor and has been for nearly 40 years. And I would point out that because there are civil penalties only, civil penalties can be resolved in several ways, including non-monetary ways. Yes, you could get a ticket for a civil infraction, but we have yet to arrest anyone for these civil infractions. That is not what our goal is. Officers generally give a warning before they even give a ticket. They communicate with individuals. It is not only the transient population and/or the homeless that are in the parks after dark. I remember as a teenager getting caught in the park after dark myself, and I'm certain that many people on this call have been in the same situation. Whoever is in the park after dark is asked to leave because it is a violation of the city code. But you may also remember that you likely did not get a ticket, you just got a warning and were asked to leave. Next slide, Michelle. So what does section 6244 camping actually mean if it were to pass? Simply put, it means you may not create a dwelling in or on a public park, playground, or trail by setting up a shelter and simultaneously participating in activities such as eating, sleeping, and/or storing personal property, meaning that you're not going to get a ticket because you take a nap in the park. Nobody said that you cannot eat in the park. Nobody said that you can't take your blanket, lay out in the park, and look at the clouds, or whatever it is that you want to do with your family during the day, or just rest in relaxation while you meditate. But if you purposely set up a dwelling there and simultaneously participate in activities such as eating, sleeping, and storing personal property, then you would be in violation of the camping portion of the ordinance. You may continue to eat in the public park, you may continue to cook in the public park during the day while the park is open, the same as all residents of the community are allowed to do, so long as you're not violating the hours of park operation. So I believe that's the last slide, Michelle. Am I incorrect? Okay. So I just wanted to give some clarification that this one particular amendment is applicable to the entire Article II labeled Conduct in Parks. And there are many other provisions within that article that do cover some of the issues that we've heard about here tonight. So as much as I can empathize with the situation with the homeless, and we are all willing to work with the community on that, we are not violating constitutional rights, we are not stopping people from eating in the park, we are not stopping people from having blankets in the park, we are not stopping them from cooking in the park. We are actually enforcing the rules that have always been there and clarifying with additional language about those rules because we have seen an uptake in these type of activities in the park. And as we stated in the initial memo, we've also seen an uptake in those who want to use the park- An uptake in those who want to use the parks throughout the day because of the recent pandemic. And there being limited activities available for them to use, for them to have outdoor activities. So think mayor, that's the best clarification. That I can give. As far as what the actual changes are that are proposed and I hope that that at least gives a little bit of explanation to some people. And I really want to reiterate that. These are civil penalties, it's not a criminalization, we're not changing the level of the penalty in any way, shape, or form. And that. Um, we do have that discretion to work with people to have other ways to resolve a civil infraction. But people are not hauled off and carted off to jail for civil infractions and I'm. Almost a hundred percent certain that our chief police is on this. Zoom meeting and we've talked in depth about this and. I'm certain that he would back us on the fact that his officers go out to communicate. And give information and they give warnings before any type of ticket is ever given out on something like this.
Thank you. Attorney Henigan, appreciate that. Now it is time for Commissioner comments.
I have some comments, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Let me start by saying. I've received some emails and seen some reporting in the media that greatly concerns me. If you know me at all, you know that I've had a reputation for many years of being an advocate for the homeless. Tonight, I want to voice for them again. When you say homeless, that encompasses a lot. Most homeless across the nation are couch homeless. Meaning they're moving from family to family or friend to friend. For short periods of time, sometimes having their families split apart during this time. Some may even find themselves living in a van or a car. There's a stigma that gets attached to the word homeless and that's not fair. The situation we have found ourselves in. Is that a very small group of people. Maybe only ten or twelve have trashed parts of Kiwanis Trail and Trestle Park and under some of our bridges. We've had clothing, food, beer, liquor bottles, and even syringes tossed about. We've had these same people congregate in such a way that others who want to use the trail or the parks. Don't feel comfortable. So this small group has given the entire homeless community. A serious black eye. And they've made other citizens who want to utilize our parks stay away. This isn't acceptable in Adrian and I can't believe it would be acceptable in any city across the United States. That being said. Parks have always been closed at night. No need to spell out camping in our ordinance because the park is closed. Closed means closed. As far as I'm concerned. Now knowing that there have always been people living on the streets. I realize that sometimes they may find a secluded spot someplace to bed down. I hung out with people who lived that lifestyle in two thousand and two and two thousand and three. But I never saw the filth and total disregard for public property that I've seen recently. Back then, everyone stayed outside, there wasn't a shelter in town for men. Yet, when I first started reporting about the homeless in two thousand and two. People accused me of lying because they'd never seen them. In two thousand and two, I had a friend. I called my third shift friend because he often slept under bridges. And other discreet places during the day and then would. Go out looking for bottles and cans at night. He was always very careful how he packed his belongings and where he stashed them. Trying never to leave a trace of where he was staying. So today, if I were walking through the park or along the trail. And I saw someone had carefully stashed their bedding or belongings discreetly. My thoughts would be, I hope no one steals their stuff. This small group. Who, who have created this problem. They are people who have shown no respect for the people of the city. I had a local business owner reach out to me and tell me. That he has caught drunk grown men using his parking lot for a bathroom. He has had to spend extra money to secure and deal with the situation. We're spending more than two hundred thousand dollars. To expand the Kiwanis Trail this year and it's not going to be okay to trash it. I want to thank the people who volunteer and share the warmth, the daily bread, the Salvation Army. And other food pantries and housing services. For the work is noticed and appreciated. And the city of Adrian will never disrespect the community that you volunteers serve. But we will also not tolerate a small group to have shown disrespect for the community at large. As a commissioner. We represent about twenty-two thousand people. I'm sorry that less than twenty have created this situation. That's all I have on the matter this evening.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
This, this matter has been very difficult for me. Um, you know, I, we all have received numerous emails. Some of them getting pretty personal and judging my character. Um, and that, that's made it hard. I know that's what I signed up for. But, but this is a tough one. For people to, to reference us as not being compassionate or caring. Uh, I'm willing to say they don't know the six of us. As well as the, uh, as Lad said, we do represent twenty-two thousand people. And, and we represent. All of them in some capacity. In this role though, and I've mentioned this before, we're also an employer. Um, so, um, safety comes to mind from the employer side of things. Uh, I've talked with some of my staff at Parks and Forestry. And, and there's great concern for them, um, when, when cleanup is necessary at this point in time. Um, from these encampments that are showing up. Uh, there are sharps or, or, or medical needles out there, there's feces, there, there's trash. Um, there, there's any number of things that's out there that. We need to be aware of and, and we need to take into consideration. Additionally, uh, you know, this is somebody's house or, or home at that point in time. And, and that shouldn't be taken lightly. Um, and, and there's pride in some of these areas as well. But in the same right, there should be rules and expectations known around these areas that, that people, um, um, can't do something along those lines. And this applies to, to more than, than just, um, what, uh, somebody that is classified as homeless, but it applies to all of us. Um, and you know, I, I've used the examples that I've talked to, to concerned citizens that. Uh, I went days hardware last weekend and there's hammocks available on an end cap and they're very reasonably priced. And, and I think it would be pretty nice to go spend a weekend in our, in some of our, our parks, um, you know, Heritage Park being one of them. I can't imagine how lovely the stars are in, in, in the scenery is out there. From, just from my perspective, so. We can't do it though. We can't open it up to one, we can't open it up to many, we can't, we, we have to continue to, to monitor and for everybody's safety. Additionally, the, the safety of our, our residents, um, the, you know, there, there are some, uh, some photographs or examples where people's encampments have. Have been right up to the edge of the park and, and that. We need to be aware that that's not the most welcoming or, or, or open way to enjoy our parks. Or for somebody to claim a, a certain parcel or portion of that park as, as more than just a temporary establishment. Um, and, and back on the idea of campers. Uh, there's no facilities available or, or restaurants in, in those parks at, at certain locations and things. And so, um, waste of all types is just being left behind. And, and that's not the way anybody wants our parks to be. Um, it. And as well is, is in the colder months, there's, there's desires to have fire and, and what problems that could, could, uh, could lift up further. The statement, uh, was made that the, the, the homeless are in our parks doing innocent activities. To my points that I've made prior, I don't see some of these as innocent activities. Um, as there are facilities available. Um, it's, uh, and I have gone and spoken with these people with the chief of police. And their comment back to me was they're not as convenient as we'd like them to be. That's, that's, that's a truth, um, i- i- to some point. Additionally, people have made constant comments to me that. This is not addressing the issue or the problem. Many have mental health or alcoholism. Uh, and you're not understanding what the underlying issue is. Um, I guess my challenge to that is. If they're set up deep in the woods or deep in the parks camping. Or is anybody really understanding or addressing any of the mental health or, or other challenges that they, um, are facing? We have just been educated on municipalities and, and legalities of, of homelessness. Um, I, I question that and, and I, and I, and I challenge that. What are, are other municipalities near and far doing to address this issue? And why does this solely fall on our shoulders? You know, a sixty-bed facility, I, and I know it's at limited capacity or reduced capacity in our community. What's the right number for that? What, what is of providing, um, proper homeless shelters? Because, um, if you, if supply is continued to be addressed in one area, demand will probably increase with it. And, 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 and I have concern for our, our community in our city and, and that idea. Um, in some of the emails that we've received, um, we've been challenged to partner with Share the Warmth. Um, and, and I feel like we did, we, we, we have provided the zoning change for that facility. And, and we have communicated with Share the Warmth. I have personally spoken with a board member and, and an active volunteer multiple times in the last month. Because I need to know, I need to know truths, I need to know their perspective, I need to talk to them about it. Because I didn't know. And I didn't know before we did the rezoning and I know so much more now. I know that they're passionate people and I know they're way more in tune with what's going on in that population right now. I know that. I, I. That is, Mayor, that's all I have for time. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could.
Commissioner Hell.
Just reading the chat messages and some of the comments about, you know, rich commissioners that are not compassionate and, and, and. And like Commissioner Watson said, I think that. A lot of the folks on the call don't know us personally. And, and, and they for sure don't know my story. Um, so piggybacking on what Commissioner Watson said about Share the Warmth. Um, Share the Warmth would not be there if it wasn't for. Um, three of the, what was called uncom- uncompassionate commissioners that are on the dais right now. Furthermore. These three individuals also, um, beelined the process, uh, it was Bed and Winter, Holy Vortex, Commissioner Sherry will remember this. We actually housed the homeless population in Bone Pool. And we had adopted via resolution. So. When we had, when we rezoned Share the Warmth. We had a room full of people that was opposite of tonight. We had neighbors. We had, we, we had families, we had, we had professionals. And these folks. Were fired, I thought there was two hundred people in the, in the chambers that night. The seven of us that were there for that process stood our ground. Because there is a need to help, there is a need to be compassionate. My story is quick, I, I, I have an employee, um, about a year and a half ago. I don't, I have so many employees, I didn't really know his story, but he was found in my shed sleeping on a Saturday afternoon at the dead of summertime. I went in there. I said to the particular employee, I said, I, I said, what's going on? You know, David. And, and he says, I don't have any place to go. Now, an uncompassionate individual would just be, okay, well, you gotta figure it out, you can't, but what did I do? I, I gave him more resources, we talked, he told me his challenges. And a year and a half later, he's one of my best employees I have right now. So to call us compassionate, like Commissioner Watson said, we signed up for this job. But when we're getting emails and, 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 and calls. Pleading that, that kids are finding. Needles, kids are finding things in the trailer, we have an obligation as a city commission to, to provide public safety. This has nothing to do with the homeless population, this has nothing to do with providing public safety for everyone. I understand the mental health component of it. I understand the addiction component of it, I have addiction that runs rampant in my family, I get it. But when we sit up here. The six of us have done our research on this ordinance and I, I, I truly believe. That, that, that we are going to continue to work together with different pro, different community members to help address this issue. We're not turning our eye on this, what we're doing is, we're, we're, we're providing public safety. And I think that's our obligation of the city commission, but to call us compassionate. Or to say just because we have a, a certain socioeconomic status is not fair. Um, but again, that's what we signed up for.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I just a couple of comments, I'll try to keep it very short. Commissioner Strayers, Watson, and Hellt have pretty much said. The things that, that need to be said. I just want to comment on the idea of having the Human Relations Commission. Work with the organizations in the community. To work on solutions that they can bring back to the city commission for us to talk about. We got six out of nine members of the commis, the HRC. On this meeting right now. And I think that, that every one of them want to help and I am, am thrilled. That we have such an organization, such a commission within our city government that. Um, that they could come forward and work on a meaningful project. To help us find solutions. The commit compassion issue. I, I agree with other things, if you, you don't know the six commissioners. And the mayor. You don't know him personally, you can't know the compassion that they have for all of our citizens, not just the homeless. There are a number of people on this call that know me personally. And they've seen the work that I've tried to do in the community. And. I. It would make me very sad to, to know that they think I lack compassion. So I was, you know, that's all I really want to say, but please understand. As others have said, you know, we represent an entire community. As Attorney Henigan said. This is not. A homeless ordinance, this is a camping and parks ordinance. Yes, there is, you know, consequences. And I think we understand what those consequences are and back, refer back to the fact that we've got it, a part of city government in the HRC. They're going to help us find solutions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to weigh in on so.
Go ahead, Commissioner Roberts.
So I did do some research on camping ordinances. City of Detroit, section thirty-three. No camping, camping is prohibited. Mount Pleasant, no camping. City of Ann Arbor. No camping allowed in city parks. Rochester Hills, tents and camp, canopies not allowed, and that was just this summer. The city of Newago, Michigan has almost the identical camping ordinance. In place and has for several years now. The State Department of Transportation doesn't allow. Tents or camping on the state property either, not just. Cities are doing this, but the state of Michigan. Does not allow it either. We are not alone. In requesting. That the. People of the county, not just city residents of Adrian, not to erect tents on our city property without permission. It's have, it's all over from what I can tell, there are many, many cities. And again, this is about no erecting of a camp. A dwelling, a place where you are going to live. That is not what we want in our city parks. I have to say also. There's many on here that don't know me very well, but I can tell you, I was one of the. I was instrumental in beginning Share the Warmth from the time it started at Saint Mary's Church. I remember seeing. I remember seeing the gentlemen sleeping outside on our steps at church where we tried to allow them to come in and sleep in our activity center and weren't allowed by the state. And then we moved to Salvation Army. So for all these years, I have been a volunteer at Share the Warmth. My family has volunteered. My daughter did the laundry for an entire year as a college student. She would pick it up there and she would take it to the laundromat as a college student who did not have to do this. I have provided meals, I have provided, I've attended their fundraisers, I have no problem with homeless in the city. It's not just homeless. It's the condition of our parks that we are addressing. As someone who uses the parks almost every day with my dog, those of you see my dog Tank and I out walking early in the morning and later in the evenings, I have seen this firsthand, the condition, the deterioration of our parks. And there have been times where I can understand that I could not use section of the park because of people actually setting up tents in the areas. That is not what we want for the city residents. And the city residents who aren't on here that have come out to us and expressed I really wish that they had come tonight and will be, you know, will be a vocal point in the future for other sitting meetings. That is all.
I'm going to address this now as all the commissioners have spoken. I wrote down many thoughts. Anyone that knows me personally knows that I have thick skin, so I understand when I took this oath of office that I was going to receive a lot of criticism and that I was never, not always going to make the popular decision and and in my voting. But I do want to say to call any of the commissioners in compassionate or, you know, not caring individuals is just wrong. This whole group is a very compassionate, very caring group. I have volunteered at Share the Warmth myself. I have asked if I see somebody that's homeless that I think might be, I don't care if they're homeless or not. If I see somebody that looks like they need a cup of coffee or maybe they need a meal, I've offered that to them. This is not targeting the homeless, this is literally just clarifying an ordinance that we already have. And I just want to be very clear, that is all it is. And whether we were to pass it tonight or not, this ordinance already exists. So you can't be in the parks overnight, it has always been that way. My, me and my friends got in trouble in high school for being in the parks. Oh, it was very late at night. I know so many people growing up, I've known people recently that have gotten reprimands and warnings and gotten in trouble for being in the parks, this is not new. This is just clarifying something that already existed. Is it wrong that the hours were put up and that the signs were put up prematurely? Yes, I was very upset myself when I learned that had already occurred before we had even voted on this ordinance. That should not have happened, shame on us. I will take full responsibility. I I was not aware they had gone up, but when I found out, I had seen them myself and I was really upset about that myself. That should not have happened and we will try to make sure that that never happens again. This ordinance had not passed, those signs should not have been up, that is a true statement. I was already tonight going to be asking for a motion after we get through this to charge the Human Relations Commission with working with Concerned Citizens Group and advocacy centers to find solutions and alternatives and help, there is a great need. I had a very long meeting with Housing Help of Lenawey the other day. It broke my heart when I saw that they have spent forty-eight thousand dollars this year already on motel rooms trying to help those in need. That is double what their fiscal year budget even is and that's what they've spent. There needs to be ways for the city to come together to work with these groups. Yes, we need to have that and we have that in place. Human Relations Commission, that is the best avenue to to make these conversations happen, to make change happen. Let's get that going, I'm a member of that Human Relations Commission. I am all for that, I want to be actively involved in those conversations. The, there does need to be mental health help, that is, that is definitely a deficit right now in our in our county, in our city. Substance abuse, there needs to be help, there needs to be housing help, there needs to be thinking outside the box, coming up with other ideas. What can we do, where can we look for alternative housing solutions? I I really personally think that these areas need, can be looked at and the city can come together using the Human Relations Commission to work with these groups and present that to the commission, to the city commission. Bring bring these ideas and these thoughts and let's have these conversations. There is a need for this. Like I said, if we were to pass this or not tonight, no matter what, it is already against the ordinance that currently exists to be in the parks overnight. So somebody can still get a warning or, you know, have an officer speak to them or possibly a civil infraction. Already, that already exists whether we pass this or not. But I don't want to look at that, we need to look at what can we do to make this a better community for everyone. I am dedicated to that, I've had so many meetings in the last five days that I and I want to have more, I want to have those conversations, we are all listening. We want to see a change. And we want to make their, make that change happen, we want to work together, we want this to be communication and a great team effort and let's make this happen to make it better for everyone in our community. Not just a select group, but for everyone and we can do that. And I I will, I will be asking after we do vote on this though, and however we vote, I am going to be asking about the Human Relations Commission and and seeing about having them take charge of a group, an advocacy group and getting together with citizens. Thank you. So to revisit, ordinance twenty dash zero zero six, we have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Ordinance approved by unanimous vote.
And Attorney Henigan, I am okay to right now ask for a motion to charge the Human Relations Commission with working on advocacy, working with a concerned citizens group?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. May I have a motion to charge the Human Relations Commission with working with concerned citizens to help our homeless population and those in the areas of mental health and substance abuse?
So moved.
Commissioner Gauss. I'm sorry, did somebody second it?
Halt.
Are there any public comments about that motion to charge the Human Relations Commission with working on this task?
Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Halt to charge the Human Relations Commission with working with Concerned Citizens Group and advocacy centers to find solutions with the homelessness and and also in the areas of mental health deficiencies and substance abuse deficiencies. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna need help with this description now.
The Human Relations Commission with working with the Concerned Citizens Group on this task.
Okay. Motion to charge the HRC to work with concerned citizens regarding this task is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go to special orders. This is special order, this is SO dash one, public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of a property assessed clean energy program. I now open this public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of the property assessed clean energy program. Is there any public comment?
Mayor, maybe I could just introduce what this is, this is a
Go ahead, sorry about that, yes.
This would be a citywide program that would allow for individual property owners to request the establishment of a special assessment district for energy related improvements to their property. We have a program report that's been prepared with the assistance of Lean and Green and that's been available at City Hall in advance of this public hearing. And so now is the time to hear any public comments on it. It was proposed resolution later on in your kind of established program.
So at this time, we will take any public comment?
Ten Tokars, one ten South Locust. I guess I was hoping maybe you guys could put out some more information, does this mean that it has to be a neighborhood? Does it mean an individual property goes up? It, I think this was talked about in the pre-meeting, you know, there's really no communication from council on what this really is except for what Mr. And I think that it needs to be passed until you can pass on voting on it until you can give the public more information on actually what they're giving public comment on.
Good evening, Mayor Heath and commissioners, my name is Todd Williams, I'm general counsel for Lean and Green Michigan, we're a third party pace program administrator for forty-six local jurisdictions. We've been working with your administration and developing and bringing forth this pace program report. I am happy to ask any particular questions that the commissioner or the public have and assist in describing what this program would do. Essentially, it will create a pace district that is determinative or equal to potentially the jurisdiction of the city of Adrian. However, no property owner will be assessed against their will or by surprise. Rather, it is a method and methodology which allows for industrial, commercial property owners to come forward, securing their own private financing and seeking to undertake renewable energy or energy efficiency upgrades to their properties. Would be eligible for nonprofits as well as for-profit properties, but you know, Michigan Pay statute is limited only for commercial industrial. At this point, it does not potential properties. At this point, I'll I'll cede any time and be here to answer any questions from the commissioners or from you, Madam Mayor, or members of the public as well.
Hearing no further comments, I declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty dash one fifty-six is from the city commission. It is a resolution to approve an employment agreement for the city administrator. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Port, Halt.
Are there any public comments? Hearing none, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
You're on mute.
I think he said yes.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Our twenty dash one sixty-one is from the city commission. Is the resolution to approve the payment of a stipend to the city administrator for his continued performance as community development director? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, Roberts.
Are there any public comments?
I'd like to speak. Hello?
Yes?
Yes, I'd like to speak. On behalf of the homeless people, you know, life is already hard for us.
Right now, we're talking about the city commission, the resolution to pay the stipend to the city administrator for his continued performance, there will be, as the community development director, but there will be public comment at the end.
Okay, how much more time I got away? These good marriages, they gonna keep letting me eat on their dime?
You, yeah, you'll have, you'll have time at the end to speak.
All right, Mayor.
Ten Tokars, one ten South Locust. My question is, a couple of months ago, you guys blindsided everybody when you got rid of Chris Miller. Is this the same position or is this a different position?
Hearing no more public comments, I will move on to commissioner comments and I will be answering the question that I know has been raised by others. This is actually the position that Greg Elliott was already doing and we, once we had approved, have approved him as city administrator, he will be looking to replace his position, but this is his current position that he has been in in the past year. Any other commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous.
Resolution R twenty dash one sixty-two is from Community Development. It is a resolution to establish a property assessed clean energy program. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Roberts.
Support, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-163 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Drake Lally to the Downtown Development Authority Board. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Strayer.
Support. Help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
I have just one. I would say that I've known Drake Lally for several years now and I think that he will be a very good addition to the DDA. And I believe that he's going to be an up-and-comer in downtown Adrian business community.
I would also like to echo that and I was in on the interviewing that Drake interviewed with me along with several others from the DDA and I think he is going to be a great addition to the DDA. I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-164 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Kirk Valentine to the Construction Code Board of Appeals. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution. Gauss.
Support. Watson.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say that I've gotten to know Mr. Valentine very well over the last couple of years and I think he would be a great addition to the Construction Board of Appeals. Thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-165 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Chad Johnson to the Construction Code Board of Appeals. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Strayer.
Support. Help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-166 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Nick Paris to the Construction Code Board of Appeals. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Watson.
Support. Gauss.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-167 is from Utilities. It is a resolution to award a bid for the purchase and installation of one replacement overhead door and opener at the wastewater treatment plant. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Roberts.
Support. Strayer.
Are there any public comments?
10 tow cars, 110 South Locust. When you guys did the energy program with Johnson Controls, they were gonna replace several overhead doors. Why are you doing something that's already been approved?
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-168 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to approve a proposal for engineering services such as survey, design, and additional consultation. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Help.
Support. Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-169 is from Assessing. It is a resolution to set a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the proposed Downtown Parking Special Assessment District. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Roberts.
Support. Gauss.
Are there any public comments?
10 tow cars, 110 South Locust. On this, I guess I'm hoping the commission can clarify what the additional $60,000 in contingency is. I've been monitoring this for the past 10 years. We put $25,000 a year in there for the, for over the 10 years, it's $250,000. The city contributes $60,000. And now you guys all of a sudden added a new category called contingency. I was hoping that someone could explain that at some point in time.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Yeah, the resolution is simply to set the hearing, correct?
We're setting just a hearing. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-170 is from Transportation. It is a resolution to approve the revised Title VI program for the city of Adrian Development for dial-a-ride and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the acknowledgement of the aforementioned program. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Move to adopt the...
Go ahead, babe. Support. Watson.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-171 is from Transportation. It is a resolution to approve the Rural Transit Assistant Program's third-party contract between the Michigan Public Transit Association and the city of Adrian and to authorize the mayor to execute said contract. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Help.
Support. Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-172 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to renew the medical marijuana facility permit, MMG 18-012, for Herb of Life Incorporated. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support. Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-173 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve a new medical marijuana facility permit for Flourish LLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Watson.
Support. Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-174 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the transfer of the medical marijuana permits from Adrian Elite Extraction LLC to Adrian Elite Cultivation LLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Help.
Support. Roberts.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, this is Brian Handler. I'm the general manager of Adrian Elite. We're setting up that new facility on Railroad Ave next to Omni Source. We just received our COO and we're looking forward to working with the community and hiring some local people and getting started. This transfer is important for us because we're just cultivating at this facility. So by putting these licenses into another entity that is exact, the extraction and the cultivation entities, both are essentially the same. We just want to separate our cultivation activities that are in Adrian for accounting purposes. So this is important for us and we appreciate your hearing the resolution and would appreciate your support in transferring these licenses. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-175 is from the city attorney. It is a resolution to approve a limited commercial marijuana facility permit application period. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Roberts.
Support. Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-176 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve the sale of 20 acres of city-owned property on Beecher Street to Objective Growth Michigan LLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Watson.
Support. Strayer.
Are there any public comments?
Mayor, in the resolution that was in the packet, we left the amount blank. The offer is, that is before you and it is now an offer, received a signed offer, is for $500,000. As you know, the original negotiations around the sale were at $600,000 and at the 11th hour, the prospective purchaser amended their offer to be $500,000. My estimation, there was nothing about the negotiations that justified that reduction. You will need to specify an amount for the resolution if you're inclined to go forward with it. I think that if you, if you specify the amount of $500,000, then tomorrow I will execute the purchase agreement. If you were to specify the original amount, that would be of the nature of a counteroffer and negotiations would continue on that basis. So we just need, in considering this resolution clarity as to which, what sale price you're comfortable with.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to amend my motion to be a motion in support of sale of the property for $500,000.
Commissioner Strayer, do you still second, do you, or does somebody second his motion? Commissioner Strayer?
And I'm fine with that.
Are there any other public comments before I go to commissioner comments?
Yes, Mayor Commissioner Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I'd like to just back up what our city administrator said. The original offer was $600,000. He believes that that is a reasonable market value offer and I think you should reconsider that rather than accept the $500,000 that's now being offered. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I had the opportunity to speak with through the owners of this establishment as well as one of their... I had the opportunity to speak with the owners of this establishment as well as one of their agents this morning. Had a great conversation with them. They're excited to come to Adrian. They have the capital to come to Adrian in a short time. I feel like the reduction in purchase price is justified in the fact that that property's been for sale for a long time and they're going to make something of it in short time. Approximately 60 full-time employees would be online and putting this property in their hands will be a long-term benefit to the city, even at $100,000 discount in the current.
I will say in my comments that I have thought long and hard about this because I was aware in my conversations with Greg Elliott that this was going on and that they were most likely going to be offering less. And I really thought about it, took the whole weekend to really consider it. And as long as that property has sat there, I feel that 500,000, it may be a great deal and now that we are rezoning, but if we get them in, maybe we get more in and maybe we are selling more property and we haven't been making any money off that property and now we have a way to make money on that property. So I know I was really torn and I was also saying, oh, counters, see what they'll do. You know, that was my gut, but I do feel that they were pretty steadfast in their 500,000 offer. And like I said, that property has been sitting there for a long time and I would like to see us bringing that back on the tax roll and possibly that starts more property selling out there as well. I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
No.
Resolution to approve the sale of 20 acres of city-owned property on Beecher Street to Objective Growth Michigan for the amount of 500,000 is approved by a five yes, one no vote.
Resolution R 20-177 is from Administration. It is a resolution to accept donations for the extension of the Kiwanis Trail and to waive the bid process and to authorize the engagement of Slarsky Excavating and Paving Incorporated in the construction of the extension. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Support Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-178 is from Administration. It is a resolution to accept donations for the demolition of 439 Frank Street and to waive the bid process and authorize the engagement of Slusarsky Excavating and Paving Incorporated in the demolition. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to.
Resolution, go ahead, Mayor.
Move to adopt the resolution, Roberts.
Support Hou.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hou.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-179 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to extend our contract with Stevens disposal for our downtown dump. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Any comments on these reports? Now it is public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, I would like to speak. Can I be heard? Am I still on mute?
You're good. Go. You're fine.
I'm Keen Ramos, homeowner on South Winter. You already know the rest. I hope you, I seem to have missed the R 20-180. Maybe I just looked away at that time, but I hope you intend to fund and support the HRC if you expect us to deal with such massive projects like racism, overseeing the police, and now homeless, mental health, and addiction, especially considering the last time we got funding was from a third party and we are unpaid volunteers. I would also like to point out that with the sunset change, sunrise change you've decided to pass, you are changing the closed hours from your seven hours to 13 hours of closed time in winter. How's this helpful to anyone in the community? I also certainly hope a good chunk of that money that you've gotten from selling those acres is going to be used to build shelters and housing for the homeless. Furthermore, I still don't know why we don't include the pre-meeting agenda and the pre-meeting time on the page called Current Agenda. Those are still part of the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Mayor and Commissioners.
Go ahead.
Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. So I want to go back to the issue of the Beecher Street property. I read the packet. I read what our city administrator was recommending. But with the latest negotiations, nothing changed. His opinion that the original offer of $600,000 was fair and nothing in a renegotiation would warrant it being reduced by $100,000. We're not privy to the conversations that some of you have with the proposed owner, so we don't know what that was, but I would suggest that it's frustrating to me that we just hired a new city administrator with whom I have a lot of confidence and we're not listening to what he has to say. We don't know the whole story, but I went on his recommendation of what I read in the packet. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comments, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Roberts?
I would just like to remind everyone, especially everyone on this meeting tonight, that we are accepting applications for an open seat on the City Commission through October 8th. And you can find our information about that on our website. But if you have any questions, please reach out to us via email and we can help answer questions about what it's like to really sit on the City Commission. If you'd like to talk with me, I would be happy to do so.
I would like to thank everyone for your patience and sticking with us throughout the evening. It's been a long evening, I know. I would also like to invite everyone that would like to join tomorrow night. There will be a pre-meeting at 6:00 PM for the Human Relations Commission with their regular meeting at 7:00 PM. They may or may not be amending their agenda when we begin based on the conversation from tonight and the motion that was passed, but their agenda is also on the website and you can see that. And you are more than welcome and we highly encourage you to join the Human Relations Commission meeting tomorrow night as well.
Madam Mayor, Andrea.
It's, I'm at time right now, sorry. Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I have a motion to adjourn? Was there a second?
Yes, Strayer, support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Hopefully I'll see many of you tomorrow night. Thank you. Oh, sorry, HRC's pre-meeting is at 5:30. They just corrected me. Sorry about that.